Ladies and gentlemen, I'll call the meeting of the Buchanan City Council to order. It's a pleasure to see everyone here tonight. What we'll do is we'll start off with, as we always do, with the moment of silent prayer meditation and then the pledge of allegiance. All righty. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the second of our town hall meetings that the city council has had. The city council recognized after the last elections that a lot of citizens wished that they would have the opportunity to speak to council and have council hearing what their suggestions may be. A lot of folks also told us they didn't like having to come to city hall. Sometimes we sit up on that stage up there and we have to look down and there's a dais and if you'll notice, I moved that podium out of the way. We're going to make this as simple and easy as possible. You might remember at the last town hall meeting that what we tried to accomplish there was to listen to what the citizens said and the council members really didn't get a chance to speak. We wanted the citizens to speak and not for the council to have an opportunity to try to argue back and forth. Tonight, we're going to try something a little different. It's going to be a little bit more of a moderator type. What I want to ask you to do, and I hope everyone got an agenda, we're going to be following that tonight, and I hope everyone got a chance to sign in if somebody's got the sheets, they want to pass it around. We're going to try to keep this as civil and cordial and as neighborly as we can. Keep in mind, you've got Republicans and independents and Democrats in the room, so let's just try to keep it as cordial as we can. What I'm going to ask you to do is on each one of the topics, I'll begin off by giving you a background, a little background information of where the council is at at this point, within the discussions that we're going to be having, for instance, the BNO tax or business and occupancy taxes. We'll talk a little bit about that. Then what I'll do is open the floor to any of the citizens to stand up, give us your name, so that way for the camera and for our council members to know who you are, your name is. I know they mostly know who you are, but they can't see you in some cases. So we'll ask you to give your name and then ask a question of one council member. All right? And then that council member may respond back. I will give you the opportunity for a follow-up question. At that point, I will allow any of the council members to chime in. Does that make sense to everyone? Should be pretty easy. All right, that's the way we're going to go. Now, if you'll notice on your agendas, the first thing we have is the comprehensive business and occupancy tax with a million dollar exemption. Currently, the city of Buchanan already has a BNO tax. It's been in place since almost the beginning of the city. Some of you may not be aware that it was phased in. It started out with financials of banks, then it moved on to other businesses. And our very last one is the contractors' BNO. Something you should know about business and occupancy tax. It's been in most of municipalities for a very long time before the sales tax ever started. Sales tax is a way, of course, that cities or municipalities or states or even the national government can take the money from the sales tax and use it for anything that they feel or their special projects that citizens want. For instance, our contractors' BNO, all of the proceeds from that go to roads and parks. Am I correct? So any of that money goes. The city council is also looking at, well, if we wanted to implement a comprehensive for the three remaining or four remaining categories, and those are rentals, property rentals, those are lottery machines or lottery, the other one is for, remind me, professional services, so that's anybody that's certified, that has a certificate, anything from a doctor to a beautician. And is there one more? Is that it? Something unique, the city of Buchanan is one of the only cities, I believe, of two in the state of West Virginia that do not have a comprehensive BNO tax. When I first came into office and as I was running and for many years behind that camera, Mr. Thomas has talked about how the BNO tax may not be fair for those that have to pay a BNO tax and those that don't, those that have to file and those that don't. That's when the city council said, okay, let's take a look at that. Now, the city council has never suggested to lose the million dollar exemption. What that means is the million dollar exemption is gross, so everything over a million dollars becomes taxed at a certain rate. Again, council can take any of those proceeds and put it into a project, or they can put it into the general fund, or they can do pretty much anything they want. It's been suggested that perhaps there's an art movement, that any of those proceeds go to art, two, art, three, two, two, three, two, six, two, oh, one. Those are the ideas that we have. That's pretty much a review of where council is at, am I correct? And we're looking at if we want to make a comprehensive BNO or leave it as it is, increase the exemption to over a million and a half, or decrease the exemption, or have no exemption. Right now, I think council's consensus is the million dollars, but we want to hear from you. So what I'll do at this point is I'll ask the first citizen to raise their hand. I'll recognize you and then you may ask a question of whomever you would like. I had a feeling.
I don't want to sit in the batter's box.
Please, your name and answer.
CJ Ryland. I guess I ask a question, do I have to direct it to someone?
Yeah, direct it to one.
Mr. Thomas, how are you, CJ? Why is the city looking to expand its tax base in a surplus environment?
You want me to answer that question?
Yes.
I am not looking to expand our tax base. Conceptually, first of all, I was not here when they initiated the BNO and exempted certain categories. I really have come to this to consistently, I want to have a level playing field, and I'm not quite comfortable with saying, okay, X, Y, Z exempted and A, B, C is not, and they're right in the same, let's say, block. I would prefer a sales tax. I think that's the most equitable way to raise our revenue base, but we're not a large enough city to really do that. If we agree that a BNO tax is appropriate, my position is, you know, let's take a serious look at it. Don't exempt certain business categories, have everybody have to pay a portion, leave the million dollar exemption or increase it, but I'm coming at it from a very level playing field, consistently applied, and everybody has to pay their fair share. The question is, what do we do with the money? You know, if you go back and look at the cost history of the city and see how the different expansion we've had in different areas, a lot of this because we have a BNO tax. I'm also very concerned that if we tax our base, we don't want people to say, I'm going to, let's say, go 500 feet from the city so I don't have to pay.
When you use the term everybody, this is concerning business and occupation tax. When we applied the public safety fee, that went to all public utility, water users within the city, I believe that's raised north of $600,000 to date. If we're looking to include everybody, then why don't we talk about some kind of public service fee applied to everybody? You know, who are we? I mean, we, when other people come to our town, it's the downtown, it's the businesses, the architecture, the small businesses. We need to be protected, preserved, embraced, not preyed upon, and even filling out of a form and having a million dollar exemption, time is the most valuable thing we have. And if I have to spend time documenting stuff and sending it in and maybe paying a fee, you know, and the cost of doing business within the city limits grows comparison to outside, then we're going to lose, you know, an incentive for being here, but...
I don't disagree with what you're saying, CJ. I think governments become very intrusive in, at least in my time that I have observed what's happening. I'm 71 years old and I think things are much different today. I have suggested that, you know, there is not any urgency to do a comprehensive BNO tax. I'm still coming at it conceptually from what's consistent and fair and level playing field, but I also think there ought to be a process, at least we've got this out on the table now. I think there's a lot of people thought we were going to do away with the million dollar exemption. We're not. By the way, we do have a graduated scale between a million and two and a half million. You pay something different than after two and a half million. But I'd like to see us have a, maybe a think tank to talk about, you know, what are the needs for the city, for the municipality, and where is our revenue base coming from? And is there anything that we can take a serious look at, at restructuring, to provide better, more services to the community and maybe enhance the quality? I said in the last town meeting, I'm still somewhat dumbfounded, and this is not on the topic, so to say, but it is revenue and cost. Why not look at consolidating the sheriff's department and the police department? Is that something that could be worth doing or not? And we tend not to deal with these very difficult issues sometimes. So I don't disagree with what you're saying. I want the downtown to be healthy, I want the city to be healthy, but I also don't think it's fair for some people to be exempt from what other people are paying. And if it would help all of you to feel that if we do raise more money, let's earmark it for, we have needs for sidewalks and paving and lighting and so forth. I don't have a problem with that, but I think we have, we need an ongoing discussion. That's my position.
Agreed.
I appreciate what you're saying.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Any council members have anything that they want to respond to Mr. Ryland's question? Yes, Mr. Pugh.
I don't see an increase in the BNO, the people that pay the BNO taxes, the ones that haven't been paying, then the businesses, the small ones, the attorneys, the hairdressers, doctors, whatever. I don't see the increase in that being that much money to us as the city of Buchanan. I don't think there are that many of them that are going to go over the million dollar exemption. If you are, congratulations, it's very nice, Pam, you go over a million dollars from yours?
Oh, every year.
I think so, you know? And so I don't think it's going to be that much of an increase to city government, so I don't know what we're talking about, where are we going to spend the excess, because I don't see an excess that much more than what we have now under the current BNO tax. I do think it's only fair that everybody pays, that every business pays or has the option to pay on a BNO tax. I don't know why there were exemptions written years ago when they made it up, and it seems to me like when you look down the people that are left out, it could be the old cronies of those that were in office. That's not going to happen anymore, I can guarantee you that. It's going to be fair, it's going to be everybody or nobody. So my point is that I think it should be fair that every business owner should be paying on the BNO tax if they owe it. If they're not over a million dollars, don't sweat it, and I don't anticipate us changing anything about the exemption of a million dollars, and I hope it can all just come out equal on this, and if we've got $50,000 left over someplace, we can put it into infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. Pugh. Any other councilman? Yes, ma'am.
I agree. I don't think that the money we'll raise will be worth the agony we put on the people to do it. You have to, every year, have someone prove, have proofs that you didn't make a million dollars and go do the paperwork, file it with city hall. We're not going to make any money, much money or any money doing this, so why bother doing it? My opinion.
Well, the reason to do it, Robin, would be to make it fair and equitable to everybody.
You let me finish.
Oh, I thought you were finished.
I'm not finished.
All right. I'll have to moderate you two.
It's your turn.
One at a time.
I do think that we need to do something that is fair for everyone, such as, and I never thought I'd ever say this, but I've changed my mind since I've been on city council, such as a 1% sales tax, which not only will everyone be paying, but for instance, when we have Starby Festival, the people at the college, students at the college, everyone would be pitching in to help do this. Right now, there's no big emergencies, so we have time to think about what we want to do, study over it, see what they've done in the past, think about why they did it, and then we can approach it.
Okay, Pam, you had a response?
First of all, I don't agree that we have to do what everybody else does. I like what we have right now, the million dollar exemption. I like the way we've been doing that, but also I am not in favor in a 1% sales tax, because if you put another extra 1% sales tax on people and business, you may as well say goodbye to them, because it's going to be too hard for the people downtown. That is why we are not having hardly any business downtown as it is, because people can't afford to pay rent and pay for products. Like me, I pay 6% sales tax and then I've got to do it again at the end of the year in anything I sell. So another 1% on anybody who has a business downtown will really hurt the people. So we have gone over this before. I know there's other, we need to find other ways to bring in money to the city, but life in general is not fair. I'm sorry. You may be a lawyer sitting there, you might make $100,000 and others might make $500,000, so, you know, it will hurt everybody in the long run, so I'm not in favor of changing anything.
Thank you, Mrs. Keberry. I'll throw in my two cents from all the research and everything that I've seen as well. My only concern is the fairness or the principle of the matter when it comes to the BNO tax. I have been through all the minutes and I see why they phased it in. They phased it in for a reason, so that the citizens would not be entirely upset, or a group of businesses would not be entirely upset with the increases. In this case, though, I do not like the uniqueness of the city of Buchanan being one of two within the state of West Virginia that do not have a comprehensive BNO. Those are the two main reasons. Insofar as the million dollar exemption, as has already been elaborated upon, that would not bring in very much to the city coffers at all, particularly with the million, yes, particularly with the million dollar exemption. So I would vote however the council and however the citizens would want me to vote on this subject. Of course, as the mayor, I don't necessarily vote in the meetings unless it's a tie. It's a very unique case that I have. I would end up probably breaking ties at some point. That's where I stand on it, but I want to hear from the citizens, and something that we have said, that this council has said since I took office, is that we are going to ask the citizens themselves how they feel, and we're going to hear them before we make any decisions on what we're going to do.
Can I make one more comment?
No, it's my turn.
Okay, go ahead.
Oh, I didn't know you were going to make a comment. Go ahead.
Well, I decided I would. David, you made me forget it.
Okay, so I have a comment.
Now, here we go. Matter of principle, that's a good thing. We as this council, this mayor and council, not all of us, didn't set these rules and these guidelines for the current BNO tax, okay? But we as this city council have a responsibility to the community to review those things that we're not familiar with and that we don't agree with, and to gather us all here together to discuss them, and that's what we're doing. We're not making a decision either way. We're getting information back from the main key players. CJ, downtown Main Street means as much to me as it does to you all, okay? I love it. I love it. I shop there, I eat there, and I play there at Artistry on the Main, okay? And I'm sure it does to a lot of other people. But that's the reason we have freedom of speech, and that's the reason we're having town hall meetings, and Mr. Mayor, I appreciate the fact that you've called this one.
Thank you very much. I think that answered that question, because I believe we'll let the audience ask another question. Yes, sir. Mind if I give you a three-part question?
Well, line with the follow-up.
Ah, there you go. Well, it's really small situations. My name is Keith Buchanan. I do have a business in the city. It happens to be an apartment, and I know part of that's on the agenda, but I would like to see that we live in a beautiful city and it is unique, and maybe we ought to think that way. We've got a beautiful downtown area, we see a lot of things that are revitalizing and things that are very encouraging, very exciting, and some cultural arts developments that we ought to be proud of and excited about. So when it comes down to whatever these taxes or whatever we do decides to what that's going to be paid for, that's where the citizens ought to weigh in. What do you want? Where's the money go? Where's the value? Do you want to expand cultural arts? Fantastic, but nobody's going to pay more tax if they don't see where the money's going. So that's a fundamental thing. It's like government, I guess. I would have a couple of questions. One is, and you don't have to answer it now, the growth of the city and growth of government generally, people are saying, ah, you know, we've got to kind of rein this in as an overall thought, but I don't know, David, you probably know this historian, 10 years ago, 2005, what was the city's budget? What is our budget today, 2015 ballpark?
General fund?
Yeah.
Around $2 million.
Okay, so where was it in 2005? Don't have to answer the question. My question would be going forward, how has our city's budget changed or grown in that 10-year period of time? And how has the city and its population and business grown over the same period of time? Because if you're matching that growth, we're okay. If we're exceeding that growth, we're not. Unless that growth means we're going to have the most spectacular thing that all the voters ever want, then they're going to pay for it. But I think we have to have that measure of conscience where how was our growth in dollars and government and bricks and mortar, how's that going to be? Just something to think about. But finally, when it comes down to BNO tax, history repeats itself. 2006, I was a chamber president, so what? But this issue came up then, remember? Dave, I think you might have been there. Chamber came down and the issue was, we're building a fire safety complex, it's going to cost $450, probably costs more than that when it's done, but $450, and we're going to change the BNO tax, and so here we come again, same issue. At that time, I happened to go down, but before I went down, I talked to my mother-in-law, lives on Pocahontas Street, and I said to her, what do you feel? You're a citizen, although citizens also are voters, whereas businesses aren't. And so I asked her, how do you feel about fire, safety, and police? She said, you know, Keith, my house got hit by lightning, called me, made a phone call. Two minutes later, they were there and my animals would have been dead. I love those guys. Oh, and a month later, some fugitive running away from the cops was hiding under her car in the carport and they caught him. I said, so if I, somebody asked you to pay four or five bucks a month for that, she said, in a blink, it'd be the cheapest insurance policy ever had. But all she was saying is, I hear, I feel the value, I'll pay for it. If you can communicate that, you get people to pay for stuff. Okay, so, but what was the decision at the city council meeting? We decided not to levy the money that city government wanted in 2006 across the businesses. We spread it across all the constituents, namely citizens and voters, and for a nominal fee of four or five bucks a month, we raised a ton of money. That's a great thing to do in a small town. Everybody's got skin in the game. So going forward, sorry, does it sound like one question? It's really the whole thought. It's one thought. So here's the question. So now we're faced with the same thing. Here we are, back at the table again. What is the case for the expanded budget? The case back then was the fire safety complex. That was pretty clear. We know exactly what that was for. We don't know what all this is about, although there are a number of things on the agenda. What value is that worth and can we create value by asking people what that might pay for? And agreeing on that would be important, but I really think it might be controversial. I think everybody should have skin in the game, but not to the tune of 2% of gross sales. You can keep the current tier that you have and the current people, take every business doing business, me included, I'm an apartment owner, and say it's $10 a month. Oh my God, that's draconian. It ain't going to put me out of business, but 180 businesses paying $10 a month is how much a month? Dave?
$1,000.
Times, yeah, okay. Is that a million dollars? No. But my point is, whatever you decide to do, if I have a question, I have a wish, it's that you go back and don't replay history. Go out to all your constituents, create the case for value, then they surprise you on what they're willing to pay for. Everybody should have skin in the game, but not under the current structure.
Yes, please. Thanks, Keith. How are you doing, Robin? You know, the 2006, I think that was a year, that was for the fire station and public safety complex, and there's a sunset provision with that, that once that's paid off, that no longer is going to be collected. You know, another possibility, which, you know, will really surprise some of you, is that eliminate the BNO tax completely and take a look at, you know, other different ways to structure your revenue base that would be more appropriate for the city. I don't know. You know, if you eliminate the BNO, most cities have done that, they institute a sales tax. They think that's a fair, more equitable tax. But then you have to take a look at what your fire fees are, your police fees, how you deal with your commercial enterprises versus your residential. You know, if you own a 5,000 square foot house, you'd be paying the same for your fire versus somebody who owns a 1,000 square foot house. Many towns that are college towns assess a fee to the residents of the college, you know, is that an appropriate thing to do? I have pushed primarily the comprehensive to be fair, to be consistent, have a level playing field. That's my position. If the rest of the council doesn't agree with that, so be it. But I do think we need to take a serious look at how we're going to look at our revenue base for the future. You know, as you say, Keith, what do we want for our dollars? You know, we are unfortunately mandated by the state legislature that says we have to do certain things, and those are very onerous, unfortunately. You're under home rule.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, but we cannot, we cannot, I mean, I'll just throw this out. How many sitting in this room have 14% into a pension plan? You know, the city and the county do that. That's unbelievable, and we don't have any choice. We have to do it, and they're guaranteed. They're not like a lot of us that have 401Ks or 403Bs that have market volatility. So we have challenges as a government entity, but where do we, what can we do to help ourselves, the citizens, the residents of the community? I don't have the answers, but I'm hoping that these are worthwhile discussions, so we, you guys are, there's a lot of intelligence sitting out there. I've only talked to Keith so far and CJ, and I know they're pretty intelligent people, and gosh, well, no, that's not it. But, you know, CJ's got a, you know, none of us have, as you call, skin in the game. None of us have any, other than Pam has a piece of property there, of course, she has her business. None of the rest of us do. So we need ideas from the people that have skin in the game, and I may not agree with you, but I sure like to have discussions for the future. Thanks.
Mary?
No, I was just saying we need to move on. It's 25 after 7:00.
I've never understood why we can't tax on the gross. Is that something, BNO tax has to be on the gross income? Could we do away with the BNO tax and get a tax that's only on your net and not call it BNO or something like that? Because I always felt like the, as much money as CJ or Keith or anybody in here puts into their business and then tax them again on their gross when they've already been taxed on the products they're using and everything else, I'd rather see it taxed on their net income, which would lower considerably. The other thing is that we cannot implement a sales tax in the city of Buchanan unless we do away with BNO tax. It has to be based on a percentage of doing away with your BNO tax, then you can implement a percentage of a sales tax. The city of Huntington had to do it down there. You have to do away with a portion of your BNO tax in order to implement a sales tax.
I believe you have to just reduce it. You cannot increase your...
Well, reducing it, it's doing away with part of it, yeah.
That could be an option.
You have to reduce it before you can implement a sales tax.
But Bridgeport right now does have, and they're looking at implementing now, reducing some of their BNO tax to increase their sales tax. They're doing both. They do a BNO and a sales tax, just for example's sake.
But I don't think we would be, have enough to realize from implementing a sales tax unless we put a 10% sales tax on to do away with the BNO tax. We don't have that much of a tax base.
And quite honestly, I don't see, and keep in mind, this is not a revenue generator. It would be very minor, less than 5,000 technically from just the numbers that I've heard of. It's not a revenue generator. It's not going to bring a lot of money into the coffers of the city of Buchanan at all. The question really is, is it upon principle? Is it fair that one person in this building has to pay it and the person at the next door does not have to pay it or does not have to file?
Let's ask them if they think that's fair.
Well, that's where we're going. Unless anybody else has anything to say, I hope that answered your comment or question in some way. The city council is actually looking, and that's why we're here, to take those things into consideration. Right. And first part of my question was, shouldn't there be some logic between the growth of city government budget and the growth of the city, either it's in population or it's growth? Well, technically, by the census, we lost population. Here in the city of Buchanan, I can't talk about the county, and the average income has dropped substantially within the city of Buchanan, and so has the, the ages increased. There are a lot more fixed incomes. Does that kind of answer the budget? Is, of course, it is because of inflation, higher, but if you base it upon those dollars at that time, the decade or so ago you're talking about, it may be even...
at that time, the decade or so ago you're talking about, it may be even a little less. I'd have to get the specifics from our city administrator, but I would dare say it's even less than it was before, in current dollars. Mr. Skinner, you got a question, sir?
First of all, I do want to thank you all for hosting this this evening. This is, this is good for us as a community to understand one another and where we're all coming from. I did want to ask a question. I wanted to refer to the application of home rule. We've heard that term a lot this evening. The city has home rule, we were one of the first waves of communities to have home rule. And in the application for home rule, talking about the B and O tax and B and O tax exemptions, there's a term in here that's used several times called an enterprise zone. I'm curious to know what the council's feeling about an enterprise zone is. You know, we talk about wanting to encourage business. We want, we talk about creating an environment that is, that is business friendly and that will attract businesses into our community. And I've also, a small tangent on the side, you've said a couple of times this evening that we're one of two cities. I've been in 50 of 55 county seats. We look better than all of them. We are, we are in, we're better, we're stronger, we're, we're, we're much better poised for the future than, than a lot of them are. So I kind of like that we're unique, in a sense. I think, I think we're doing a lot of things right here. But one of the things that is talked about in the, in this, in this application, which was approved, is an enterprise zone. That is something that is listed in here as a way to attract businesses and create, create an environment where business can flourish. Have we considered establishing any enterprise zones yet? If not, why? And do we have any plan for the future to give the businesses that are also currently paying B and O tax, a rebate, which is also used in here? And also creating an environment where new businesses come in under a tax exempt environment? So, if I have to pick, can I, can I address you as mayor? I address you as that, with that question.
Good questions, and bring up some very good points. In our home rule application, what our desire was to do is to attract manufacturing or larger businesses. The enterprise zone in no way affects the B and O, except that if you bring in a business over a certain square footage, and that includes improvement, and a certain number of employees, then we will give you real personal and property taxes, personal and what else? Personal and...
Real and personal.
Real and personal tax rebates, or actually, in this case, total for a certain amount of years, I believe it's five years. Mr. Doss, I've got to look at him. He, he was the engineer of it. I understand what it is. The whole point is, let's say there is a business that's out there looking up and down corridor H, okay? They're going to go to Weston, they're going to say, okay, well, how much is it there? Is the property good there? And what kind of a break are you going to give me? Not unlike what they did with Walmart and Lowe's, don't forget those. And you could almost consider those almost an enterprise zone type of discretion that the city gave to make those jobs and those businesses come here. That's exactly what the enterprise zone is designed to do. So let's just say we have a large company that decides it does want to come in to Upsher County. It gives our development authority an opportunity to say, you know what, if you do move your business here, and because you qualify with so many employees, and because you qualify with the square footage in this property, we feel we'll be investing in here as well to continue those jobs. It gives the development authority, it gives the city of Buchanan, it gives myself, it gives our city administrator, it gives this council an opportunity to try to sway them from going anywhere else. That's what the business enterprise zone is all about. The last part of your question, do we have one now? Not necessarily, no. We have had discussions with people about that, but they did not meet the qualifications to get into the enterprise zone. To follow up on that, if any business were to be able to improve or add a certain number of jobs, we will give them those real rebates as well. Am I correct? Does that answer some of your questions?
Yeah.
You get a follow-up question if you want.
I just, I thank you for that. I just, you know, in reading the literature in here, I just, you know, it seems as though, and correct me if I'm wrong, it seems though as, what we're talking about in here, creating an environment that is business friendly and business positive, it's kind of counterintuitive to a comprehensive B and O tax. It's the way I read it, I've had several discussions with our chamber members, and so that's just kind of what I wanted to kind of clear, and kind of make sure I'm understanding correctly, because we want to, we want to work with you as a chamber of commerce and as a development authority, and as members of this community, to make sure that we are creating an environment that is most conducive to business. We want business here. We, the last thing we want is for them to, we don't want to become Weston, Clarksburg, Grafton, where everything is shoved off outside city limits and their cores are dead. We want to, we are, you know, you leave this town and you go anywhere and people say, if somehow comes up that you're from Buchanan, people light up and say, what a wonderful town. We love going there. We love to eat, we love to shop, we love just to come and spend some time in Buchanan. And we want to continue that. And the best way to do that is to create an environment where our businesses can flourish. So, I just wanted to clear that, if, if anybody can, can, can speak to that, if this is counterintuitive or not, I'd be interested to know.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Mary.
Is the enterprise zone for a different type of businesses that we, than we have in the downtown area? Are they classified as, oh, come on.
Manufacturing.
Yes, thank you. Okay, manufacturing, industrial, those type of businesses? Or are they the businesses like we have in the...
It is any business that will bring in over 20 employees and a certain square footage built in.
Okay, that was the key. 20 employees and so much square feet.
And let me ask you this, actually, I'm going to ask a question to you, Mr. Skinner. And before I do that, I do want to elaborate that David Thomas and I are looking at putting together what he's calling the think take, I'm calling the committee, with chamber members and business folks and regular citizens, so that we can address some of these kind of concerns. But the other thing is, if you get a $2 million exemption, do you feel that that would in any way hinder business coming here?
Well, I think, I think from, from a chamber of commerce standpoint, what we don't want to see happen is, our fear, a little bit, I'll speak to it, just conversations I've had, by bringing everybody, using CJ's term of everybody, including rentals, lottery, and professional services, which I would be part of that, but, you know, by bringing everyone into the, into the, into the pot, so to speak, then seeing those levels be played with. What we don't want to see happen is for our $1 million exemption to suddenly become, you know, a quarter of a million dollars, because there's, then everyone that's, you know, that knocks three quarters of our businesses that weren't, now are underneath water and having to pay, you know, that have to pay to come back up. And then businesses that are already over that million dollar exemption will, you know, have to make up for, or will pay a larger sum of tax because it's, the threshold has been dropped. As a $2 million exemption, I mean, it's not $1 million, you know, but I think what we're looking for is certainly not going in the downward direction, because that's going to, that's going to affect, just using an example, you're, you're, then you're talking about people like Jake Andre, then you're talking about people like Pam Kepark, then you're talking about people like Main Street Antiques, and you're just, you're talking about more people that, you know, not a lot of businesses downtown, no one's swimming in cash. You know, no, no one is, no one's living up, you know, out on the south hills of town, you know, up on, up on the hill in a mansion. I mean, we're, we all work here together, and, and I don't, I don't think it does those businesses any, any, any positive foot to, you know, to tax them more. So, I don't know if that answers your question, but I, we really would strongly oppose a level drop in the B and O tax.
Just one second, that was, that's very true. And if we were to make an ordinance, we could put in within the ordinance that this would not be, you cannot drop, in this case, the B and O tax on anyone for five, 10 years. And then again, it would be, if that were the case, council would have to go before the citizens and say, look, okay, we are going to drop it. Then of course, that would be a really good chance for you to call the arms, everyone to come out and make that possible. But I couldn't make that promise, even though we, because, you know, next year, we may, you may either probably not have a town hall, or you won't have all of these folks here to make that decision. So, yes, you're absolutely right, they could be changed. Oh, that's right, you and I'll be there as recorder, that's right. Mary, did you have something you wanted to say?
David did, sir.
Thank you, Robbie, for your comments. I have three observations, and I agree with what you're saying, Robbie, about we're one of the most attractive cities and counties in the state. And I think one of those reasons, quite frankly, is because of Weston College, that is a phenomenal asset and resource for us. And, you know, sometimes we get accused of being too college-friendly, I mean, it goes back and forth, I guess, depending on who you talk to. But that's one of the great assets we have in the community. One of the issues I think we face as a municipality that's a challenge, if you look at the growth over the last 20 years, you know, it's in social services, it's in governmental agencies, it's in healthcare and so forth. And we cannot do anything in regard to a B and O tax with those, you know, entities. So, I think the B and O tax from the very beginning is not a necessarily good tax. I do think we need to apply it fairly with a level playing field, but that's not our answer for the future. I, I'm not sure what the answer is to the future, but I think we need good people that are thoughtful, provoking, have different ideas, and come up, maybe even be more unique than everybody else out there, to come up with a different kind of plan for the future. And that's where I'm coming from. You know, I'm not going to be around here forever, and I think there's a wide range of applause for that probably. But the, you know, I love this city. I came here 31 years ago at the college, and I decided to stay here. I'm going to stay here until I'm up there on some mountain with my ashes and so forth, but I'm going to work with the community. And I don't agree with all of you sometimes, and that's okay. But I think you've got a lot of great ideas, and we need to put our heads together to figure out what's best for the city in the future. But I hate the creeping, I shouldn't use this word, crud of government. You know, CJ's right, you know, in regard to the paperwork, just so that you show you're not making a million dollars, that's intrusive to some degree, and I think we have to be aware of that. But again, I'm, I hope I'm a person that, you know, fairly hope I'm principled, I want to be fair and a level playing field, and, you know, that's where I'm coming from. But there's a better way to do it, and I don't know what that way is.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Mr. Fu, did you have something to respond?
No, I think I've given a different thought. I don't think I was going to do was to ask if anybody did think it was fair.
Well, you know what, we could ask that question by a show of hands, do we, if you don't, you don't have to respond, of course.
A show of hands, do you feel that the B and O currently as it is, is a fair tax on all businesses on this?
On all businesses that, that are being hit by the B and O?
No, but all businesses.
Ask a question, what are your questions?
My question is, do you think it's fair that some of you pay B and O taxes and some of you are exempt? That's my question.
Mr. Robbie?
I don't like paying the tax, but I don't want to see anyone else pay it because I do. And I'm not, you know, Lewisburg is an example, has a $6 million exemption, and when you talk to the mayor, he will tell you they did it specifically to protect the downtown businesses plus the car dealerships, that they just wanted to tax the big box retail that came in out on I-64. They understand that that's their asset, and you can, they lead this state in, in a lot of ways, because, so if we want to be like those type of communities, then we have to behave like them. We can't get there without behaving that way.
Okay, but I saw no hands that were of the smaller businesses that said it was a fair situation.
I raised my hand. I think it's fair.
You think it's fair? I thought you were, I thought you were going to top class.
May I, may I ask, Bryce Van Ostran for the camera? It's not fair. And, and we need to somehow differentiate, and I think that's what the million dollar exemption was all about, differentiating between the private mom and pop businesses that have grown locally, organically out of this community, versus the bigger corporate national brands that have come in. Are there any people here tonight representing a national brand? I don't see any, but I don't know everybody, but I mean, those national brands often expect to pay that, for sure. Now, is it fair that Lowe's comes in and then not long after that, Home Hardware closes? You know, that's a direct impact of the, of these larger national chains. There are food national chains that have come into this community recently, taken a lot of money out of this community. Is that fair? I don't know. I mean, but we're talking about two different kinds of entities. And I think the nature of the exemption was to protect the local business that's struggling to build and grow and, and support the community. And I think it's fair to say that most of the national brands are not here trying to support the community. They're here while the money is here, and when the money's gone, they're gone.
I think that shows that more business owners, they were here for 20 years, when it got to they had to pay all their employees' retirement, they closed the plant down, their most profitable plant in the United States, they closed it down and opened up someplace else and sent the employees here local, looking for jobs all over.
So, I guess my question about differentiating the small business enterprise versus the big one, you know, the fact that there appears to be a surplus that the city coffers currently, and the fact that many of you have said that this B and O as implemented would reduce, or would result in a minimal amount of income. I mean, in fact, what it looks like is a, is a very narrow, narrowed, narrowed target at, for businesses in this town. I mean, or whoever fits into that category that would be affected. I mean, how many? I don't know if the city's done that, but there are many. And so you could almost say that this B and O implementation that you're proposing is completely unfair in the sense that it's going to specifically target just a very few. And I think it's fair to say that, that, you know, the most vibrant food restaurant, food establishment downtown is one of them, you know, and so, anyway. I guess my thinking is, if, you all know that I'm heavily involved in development and trying to make this town as beautiful and vibrant as it can be, and for those of us that work around the state and all the other small towns, I mean, it's, it's been a point of pride to me that the city wasn't desperate to a point that they had to implement these taxes. And for any of you that fill out sales taxes every month, you see all the cities that have jumped on, and that list is, is growing. And it is a symbol, it is, it's indicative of, I think, a certain desperation in some ways, but, but it's also a deterrent to many business owners. And so, I think, I think if, if it doesn't bring in much money, I say don't mess with it.
So for us to try to correct a wrong that was made 30 years ago is creating another wrong today.
Well, maybe the $1 million exemption that was in place should be through inflation increased.
I would not disagree with that. Thank you for answering that and giving us your point of view. Robbie, did you have something you wanted to say as well?
It was just, it was just an idea. You know, one of the things that I guess we're trying to do, you know, we're trying to, from a development authority standpoint, we're really trying to focus on entrepreneurship, and really starting to focus on starting small businesses and then letting those businesses grow and flourish here in Buchanan. It's a lot easier to have an entrepreneur start a business than it is to recruit a manufacturer. Last manufacturer we recruited here to Upsher County was in 1997. So, manufacturing is a, is a very competitive market to try and attract. And maybe, you know, maybe you do go with a comprehensive B and O, just to make it a level playing field, but maybe you entice folks from around the state to move to Buchanan to open up their small business by giving some kind of a, a homegrown type exemption, where if you're a small business and your ownership is local, you're exempt from B and O completely, whether you make a million or $10 million. And it might be an incentive for, for folks to come here and start businesses, and it might get the word around the state, because there's a lot of people that, that like everyone has said, Buchanan is a jewel, and they would like to live here. And, and, you know, it might entice them, that they might see that, hey, our main street is, is full, we have, you know, we have some very nice businesses downtown, and I want to be a part of that. I mean, there have been conversations the past week that folks that are around the state want to come and make, make a place in, in Buchanan as, as far as a business. I don't know what the legalities of having a homegrown exemption would be. I mean, obviously, the whole goal is to, if you want to have a big box anywhere USA, come out at the corridor, hammer them, you know, make them pay. They're a corporation, they're not ever going to invest in, in Buchanan. You know, you've got small businesses in the area that are reinvesting in downtown, and that's, if we had more small businesses that had a vested interest, then they're going to do the same, and maybe that's a way to, to try and, you know... going to do the same. And maybe that's a way to try and, you know, create some economic development. It's a win. You get, you're comprehensive, and you still hammer the big boys, take away the million dollar exemption, and you have a homegrown exemption. I don't know if it's legal or not, but just a thought.
That is not, that is a really good idea, and of course, as an economic development professional, that would be. We could actually go through the homegrown process, because we are not done with our pillars as it is, and do a micro enterprise zone, which is kind of what you're suggesting. In other words, we would allow, if a new business were to come in, they were local and they were small, then perhaps we could give them an incentive and for five years, like we, or almost like an arrangement we've made with Lowe's or Walmart, have them exempted for however number of years until they can get on their feet and get going. And then perhaps we can recoup, you know, or have some of that to invest back into the city. That's really not a bad idea, and that's something I think council should really consider. And as we get that committee, I think that's something we should consider as well.
I think some of us have considered that. And I think the challenge is how you coexist with the big box boys. And, for example, Amazon, you know, they're eating everybody's lunch as far as the brick and mortar enterprises, and more and more are going to go, you know, with the internet. But we have to, let's not lose sight that the Walmarts and the Lowe's of the world are also providing, you know, jobs for many people working out there. And I also know that they have given resources to City Hall and to other charitable organizations. So I don't think this is a, it's not one of those things you want to go, well, it's either this or that. We've got to figure out what's the best way to coexist with everybody. And, you know, the internet Amazons of the world are challenges for everybody. And, you know, we have to adapt with that kind of, you know, maybe this community at some point in time is going to be an attractive main street, but also be a place, a retirement center with affluent people. The college is a phenomenal thing with the Performing Arts Center and all the activities they have. So I think we've got to be careful while we're trying to delineate between, you know, what's the best thing to do versus what's not the best thing to do. I don't have the answer, but I think we live in very challenging times, and that we need people such as yourself and others in this room to come together and try to figure out the best way to move forward.
Very good, Mr. Thomas. We're still on the BNO, comprehensive tax. Do we have another question? Does anybody have a question to ask any of the council members?
I'm sorry. I know we've got to move on. But is there anyone in this room that thinks that a business will come here because this BNO proposal is implemented? I mean, does anybody think that this is an incentive for a business to come to Buchanan?
No.
I mean, it's not, I mean, I would say that it is a, it's a discouragement. And I don't know why council is proposing something that would discourage business.
I don't think it would discourage or encourage, one way or the other. And Bryson, you made a comment that we're, one of the most attractive food establishments in the town, the city would be penalized. They're already, you know, we're not, we don't want to change that. We want to keep that at $1 million. And maybe we should go more. You know, your comment about inflationary maybe shouldn't be a million, should be a million five. I don't know.
I don't know where the name was picked, but I think it was intended, it was intended to not hit the small mom and pop organizations.
Exactly. That was what, 30 some years ago? No, no, it was about 14 years.
It was about 14 years ago.
14, 14 years.
That's right.
So none of us really know.
Yeah. So any other questions on the comprehensive BNO? Mr. Reed, Dr. Reed?
To Reed, I'm not a city resident, but some thoughts. One is, I think the idea of going on net rather than gross has merit. Two, I think this town has, one of the reasons it's a good town is because of the number of entrepreneurs who are here. If we have big businesses, they leave. It's a major problem to pick up and go from there. We see Southern West Virginia and the problems they have with the coal industry going on. And I think that's one of our successes. And the third thing, I think we need to establish what are the needs of the city, one, which I'm not hearing coming out here, and maybe that's already been done. And the other is, we need to evaluate, you know, what kind of numbers will the things we're talking about bring? How many businesses would be affected? What is the income of the business, net and gross, in order to make logical decisions? Thank you.
Very well said. Thank you, sir. Any other questions or comments on the comprehensive? Mr. Martin?
Michael Doss has what he thinks about it.
Mr. Doss really wasn't part of the discussion, but...
I mean, he's involved a lot. He does a...
If he would like to respond, I would certainly leave the floor as a citizen to him.
I'll respond to a specific question, but there's...
Do you agree with the BNO, with the bringing in businesses?
Implementing a comprehensive BNO? No, I do not.
Just one question. I was just curious. I know he, he's involved a lot, you know, he does a lot with the businesses.
He does, he doesn't see the...
And also, he works with the people at the city hall to, you know, on the amount of work that would have to go through it, you know, people filling out paperwork. I'm just curious.
Okay. It's very simple paperwork, actually, to, for the administration on R and would be, no. It would be on actually Mr. Doss. He'd probably want to raise, anyway. Any other questions or comments on the comprehensive BNO? You know what? That was a very good discussion. I think this council and myself in particular, Mr. Doss, will go back to discuss this. I did tell you that we will be having a committee that will be formed, a think tank, that will be addressing some of the issues that we just talked about as far as business and citizens go. All right, let's move on to the next thing on our agenda then. I'm not sure if everyone is aware that, and thank you for the Board of Education for being here, Mrs. Akers, Mr. Wager, Mr. Rieger, came to, and they've actually come for a few years, to ask the city of Buchanan to have a prevention resource officer at Academy. As you may be aware, the high school and the middle school already have a PRO officer, and they're done, they're supplied or provided by the county, Upstate County, the deputies, the sheriff's department. Keeping in mind, it's during the school year, and then when there's no school during the summertime, that officer reverts back into the department to fulfill the obligations of law enforcement. Recently, after the last discussions with Chief Gregory, he feels that this may be a good idea. And I think the impetus particularly is a lot of the violence that's been happening in the schools that's garnered a lot of attention. But there are a lot of incidents that aren't on the national news that are happening on a daily basis in a lot of these schools. So when they approached, the Board of Education approached Chief Gregory, he said, yes, let's take a look at it this time. Maybe this would be something that the city should be involved in. We had a meeting with Mr. Wager, Mrs. Akers, and with Mark Stewart, who is our officer who is here. He would actually be the officer that would go in. But there was some discussion at council, and I've actually had discussion with citizens saying they just aren't comfortable with having a police officer in the schools. I, my personal opinion is, I would rather be safe than sorry when it comes to my children at any school. So I am in favor of having a pro officer there. I think it's sad that we have to get to that point. I think it's a terrible comment on our society that we have to do that. But then again, if you have children, you're going to want that guy there while your kid's at that school, okay? Now, what I would do is offer up any questions, and this is primarily what this discussion is for, to hear from the citizens at this point. I know council's probably heard from some of their constituents, I know I have. But we want to make it an open forum so that anybody in here can also ask a question or comment on how they feel the city should proceed with the PRO officer. I will add this. If we were to add a PRO officer, because we would lose one officer during the school year, we would have to look at hiring another officer that would fill Mr. Stewart's position. That may require a 25 or 50 cent increase on the police fee. That, we don't know that for sure. We haven't done the numbers on it, but that may be to fill his shoes during the whole year. Keeping in mind that a pro officer is funded through the tax levies through the Upstate County Board of Education, okay? So Mr. Stewart's, Officer Stewart's salary would be paid through those levy monies, and so would his benefits. If I'm not mistaken, we pay for everything else, car, uniforms. Has everybody got an idea of how that pro officer works? Comments or questions from the audience to council members?
Just one thing, Mr. Mayor, is a prevention resource officer, not parole officer.
PRO.
PRO, not parole.
Not a parole officer. No, no, it's not. Thank you for clarifying that. You're absolutely right. Judge Hall, you guys have some comment?
Not a citizen of Buchanan, live in Westland. Juvenile public defender, prosecutor, former judge. Money well spent. If I'm a taxpayer and somebody says, we're going to raise your fee for an officer in a school, money well spent. Trust me, the age of kids are getting involved in things is much lower than you think. So that's my only comment.
Thank you.
Officer Stewart?
Mark Stewart, Buchanan Police Department. I'm going to tell you a story. First grader decides he's upset with his teacher, takes a gun to school. People's looking at me like, why are you telling me this story? Two days ago, it happened here in Upstate County at Academy School. Now, the gun ended up, it wasn't a real gun, it was a pellet gun with a CO2 charger, and it's still a deadly weapon. But a first grader took it into school. We do need officers in schools. Dave Thomas made a comment, you know, it's a shame we have to put officers in school. It is. 40 years ago, living in Buchanan, you could leave your windows up, doors open, you didn't have to worry about your property being damaged. Now, you can't do that. Things have changed. I've been here with the city 21 years. Things have changed. And, you know, I do want to represent the city as a pro officer, but that's a decision. The finances are there. Other than the city's end up, the finances are there to put an officer in there. It's already been approved through a levy. And, you know, I really, it's my desire to be able to help. If it only saves one child, it's going to be worth it.
I might add on to there, after doing a lot of research since the last meeting we've had, statistics show that having a PRO officer in the elementary schools facilitates better communication with the teachers and with the parents, particularly when it comes to bullying and when it comes to other personal one-on-one kind of issues. Number two, it also allows the access to an officer for future reference with them as well when they get to the middle school or the high school. It gives them an opportunity to meet the officer, get to know them, and not fear law enforcement, which unfortunately, a lot of our children do, maybe from the environment they're in or whatever. Last thing is, safety in any incidents within the elementary school decline usually 75%, 75% when you have a PRO officer at your school. I'm from San Antonio, Texas. You go to an elementary school there, you're walking through a metal detector. What does that say? So here, we are very fortunate. Things don't usually happen, but access to weapons, because of our honey nature, our sporty nature, are there. So we've got, it's really a great idea, and statistics show that having a PRO officer in an elementary school is a benefit to the school. Council, do you have any comments or questions on the PRO officer that, as Mark mentioned?
I got a couple of comments.
Let's go with Mary first.
I just wanted to say that I support this prevention resource officer for the Buchanan Academy School.
Thank you. Pam?
I'm definitely in favor of it, and especially, it hurt my heart to see my five-year-old innocent little grandson come home the first day of kindergarten and tell me, Nana, they showed us where our safe place is. And that really hit hard. So I'm definitely in favor of it, and probably before it's over with, we're going to have to have one in every school.
Mr. Thomas?
I appreciate, Keith, what you said, and also Mark. And it is sad that we have to go this route. And I think I told Jody Eggers at the last council meeting, when I was in school, there wasn't a truant officer or a attendance officer. You know, we just, we live in a different kind of world today. But, and I challenge the Westland students in the room, we got a generational, multi-generational issue that we have to deal with. And, you know, I just don't want to feel that we do the pro officer, which I think we should do. You know, we should not stop there. We've got so many challenges we have to deal with. And there's so many young, well, babies being born whose mothers are drug addicts and alcohol. And these are challenges that I don't think our criminal justice system or our societal systems, for lack of a better term. You know, I've talked to a couple of doctors in the last couple of weeks, and they said it's amazing how many mothers are having newborn babies and they're already drug addicts. And, you know, I had two doctors tell me, you know, we don't have sterilization right at that point in time. So that mother cannot have any more children again. What a controversial issue that was. But, you know, those are the challenges that we're facing, unfortunately. And we've got to deal with some of these things. I just don't want the pro officer to be the remedy.
The remedy is God.
And I also would suggest, rather than hire a full-time replacement for Mark, let's use a home role. And can we do some part-time police within our community? You know, that would, something I think we need to take a serious look at.
I agree. Mr. Pugh?
Yeah, this is, going back to my high school years and everything, where we all carried our shotguns to school and went squirrel hunting afterwards with the teachers. And sometimes we even traded with them while we were at school. And it is a different world, and it's a scary world. I see for my grandkids who are in larger schools in Harrison County and Montegalia County, where they have real problems. Not that we don't have real problems here in the schools, we do. But those are much more obvious there with the facts that my grandson, who went to his freshman year the first time, and then came home telling about all the people that he saw down there, that in the dark places in the hallways and everything that were, he felt sure were passing illicit substances back and forth. Now, he must have an imaginative mind, because that surely can happen in a school system, right?
Right. I support the pro officer 100%.
Thank you, Mr. Pugh. Mrs. Simon?
In my mind, this is a no-brainer. The government has gone to pay, the levy has gone to pay Mr. Stewart, our officer, for working in the school, in the system. We just have to pay him, the city does, for the time that he is not, the school is not in session. Our police department has already been approved for 10 officers. We currently have nine. And so there shouldn't be any problem hiring the other officers to work in Mr. Stewart's place when he is at the school. So I see no complications with this whatsoever. And I challenge the county to try to find a way to make it be in every school in Upstate County, because I have grandchildren. It would really make me feel good to know that there's an officer in the school.
Very well. And I might add that it's, there's 600 students at Academy, and that's one of the main reasons why that school was discussed first for this. Mr. Wager, sir? Yes, sir?
Lord Wager, I'd just like to clarify one thing. This person, two PRO officers at the Newland High School are not guards. They are there as a visible law enforcement officer who makes contact with students every day, talks to them as, is very visible, so that they feel very comfortable seeing an officer in the building. They're not intimidated. A lot of kids feel like they can come and talk to our PRO officers and feel that they're not going to turn around and report them to the prosecuting attorney or something like that. They come with valuable information in schools. They also do lessons. They go around to the classes, and they have a whole list of lessons that they are trained on in a lot of different areas, and I can't think of any that I would talk about. Bullying, drug, drugs, everything. Just talk to the kids about those things. Same thing would happen at Academy. And I don't want you to think, it kind of sounded like when we first started that we're going to have a gardener, and like, here comes a first grader, and he's coming fit. So Officer Stewart's going to grab him. No, that's not what happens. It is to be a visible thing so that the kids feel comfortable. And our experience has been, they do feel very comfortable, Newland High School, and you're talking the older kids. And it has, has it had an effect in our schools? Yes. The number of fights over the years that we've had PRO officers has gone dramatically down. There's none of those physical occasions. We have, do we have problems? Yes. Problems, we, we're a small town, but we have the same problems that big cities have, unfortunately. And we deal with them every day. that big cities have, unfortunately. And we deal with them every day. But having the officer there gives the students an opportunity to say, "Somebody who's not there to arrest them. He's there to talk to them, to be a friend, somebody that they can confide in." And it's just amazing, at the Midland High School, the effect that it has on those. And the two officers that we have there are just wonderful, absolutely wonderful. And there is a training for that PRO officer. He does have to go to school and learn exactly what the PRO officer does. And learn these lessons that they then come back and work with the students. But I just want you, I didn't want everybody to think, "We just sent him in there, and he's gonna grab kids that are getting bad."
Troy, is there a gun involved?
They do carry their weapons. They do carry their weapons, but...
No bolts, just the weapon.
I don't think they have bolts. I don't know. Yeah. Well, they do, yeah. I don't know. I'm never asking to pull it out. I'm showing. But, yes, they do carry their weapons.
Troy, I have one question, and this is not a detrimental question in any way, but do you vet these officers that are going into your schools? Do you do background checks on them, separate from background checks? Separate from what, separate from what they do here?
I don't think we do. We rely on the Sheriff's Department, because they send us the officers that they want.
They are, or they couldn't be. I mean, there've been other cases where the officer was about to get off.
All right, Mr. Skinner, sir. I saw you were next.
The other Skinner that's here. You know, I've felt safe in Buckhannon all my life. But a year ago, I drove through Sandy Hook, Connecticut. And I will tell you that that is a beautiful, quaint, small town that reminded me when I drove through it of my town, Buckhannon, West Virginia. And I think that we all need to remember that what happened there could happen anywhere. And I absolutely am completely on board with this, even though I feel safe every day. I think it's the right thing to do, and I think we owe it to our kids.
Thank you, Mr. Skinner.
Phil, did it have been a lot different situation?
Jake Loudon?
I've got, my name is Doug Loudon. I'm with the Buckhannon Police Department. To answer Ron's question, we do a background check when we hire police officers for our department, okay? We also make sure we put the right person in the position as a pro officer. Okay? We're not gonna put somebody in that school that, you know, has a bad reputation or has no communication skills whatsoever. And obviously, our best choice, you know, at this time was Sergeant Stewart. And we approached the other officers to see if they would be interested. Officer Stewart was the first one to say, "Hey, I'm interested." And that's why we made this choice. We're not gonna put somebody in the school that's gonna be detrimental. Prior to the schools getting pro officers, I would go, the one thing that I am proud about our department is that we are very community service oriented. And I would go to the different schools, even outside the city limits, and do the Red Ribbon Week program, do drug awareness education, bullying education. And it just got to the point where, you know, we have so many calls, so many cases to investigate that I had to stop going so many places. And so, when the school started the PRO program, and then they approached us about having a pro officer at the Academy School, it was a great opportunity. And that's why, you know, we thought it would be an excellent opportunity. To go back to replacing Officer Stewart, you've gotta consider, he's got 22, 21 years' experience in our, in law enforcement, okay? It's difficult to replace somebody with that many years of experience, okay? Yes, we had 10 officers. If Officer Stewart goes to the Academy School, that's gonna drop us down even further, okay? So, and I'm, you know, the mayor, you're probably not gonna like to hear this, but in honesty, I think in order to replace the officer that we're going to lose to the PRO program, we need to hire another officer, because we're damned. You know, it's hard for us to investigate the crimes, the reports that come in to us. It's hard to be proactive and do drug prevention investigations. We need boots on the ground. And, you know, I'm sorry, Mr. Thomas, but part-time officers aren't gonna do it. Because when you hire a part-time officer, you know, if you're gonna get a certified officer to work for us part-time, we still have to provide the uniform, the equipment, because they're not gonna be allowed to bring them from their departments, okay? So, you're, you would still have to equip them. If you hire somebody that's certified, you're gonna have to send that, uncertified, you're gonna have to send them to the academy to become trained. And once they complete that training, they're not gonna work, wanna work part-time. They won't wanna go somewhere where they can be hired full-time. So, you know, if we got up to our strength of 10 officers on the road, you know, minus the pro officer, then yeah, let us hire part-time officers. But I think we need to get up to that threshold of 10 officers to do that.
How many officers do we have 25 years? What's, you know, we've had issues in our society, obviously. What was the force 25 years ago? Because I think a lot of people...
There was 12 officers.
12 years ago?
Yes.
Okay. When was the, how about in the 70s, probably?
That, I mean, I think that in the 70s is when we had the 12 officers.
And that was, I doubt that was through federal grants and so forth?
I have no idea, because that was before.
I think there was a lot of times we had little grants.
Thank you, Lieutenant. That's a point well made. Yes, Mr. Pew.
I wanna clarify one thing. I wasn't being detrimental about our department. There was a county in the state, and I don't remember which one it was, that hired a pro officer. And he didn't, he wasn't hired from within the county, he was hired from without. And they did not vet him enough, and he ended up getting in some trouble. That's what I was getting.
Let me, let me see.
For one thing, in order to put a PRO officer in the schools, they have to be a certified officer in that community for at least three years, okay? So, there has to be an experienced certified officer.
Thank you. Let me try it this way. Is there anyone in this room that is opposed or opposed to putting a prevention resource officer in the schools? You don't have to be afraid. Go ahead. Give us your comments, why?
I just question whether or not there's ever been a problem in this elementary school that a pro officer would have been helpful or needed to resolve. I mean, are we fixing a problem that exists, or is this just prevention?
That is a very good question. And I'm not qualified to answer that. I would ask Mrs. Akers, who is the student services.
Jody Akers. I just wanna say that research really bears, and we saw, we started at our high school with the PRO officer. And as we dove deeper into the research, we realized we have to go to younger, younger age. So, we went down to the middle school. And it has been instrumental in decreasing our discipline infractions and, as Mr. Wager said, assaults. Of course, we have a great network here in this community. And when I started writing those grants, it was very evident, as I started going around, I see the circle, and everybody here that was on that group and how we all connected to work with these children, all the different resources we had. And as we continued, and we've actually just got accepted for a grant for our middle school PRO again, and looking at that data, looking at our elementary school data, we see the importance with those discipline infractions. We have a lot of mental health issues. Times have changed. And we're, we're standing in that parental role as well, trying to give them the social skills that they need. And some of these kids, just teaching them how to survive. But giving them a positive role model, unfortunately, when these officers are going into those homes, and they're going in a lot, they don't see them in a positive manner. And I think this is one huge step for Upsher County schools and our young, young children in this, in this community. I mean, so much to all of us. But research really bears, we have to start young. And that's even with our graduation rate, everything. The earlier we start, the more progress we're gonna see. And it's all about prevention, informing those relationships at an early age. Thank you to these guys who were there yesterday with us, you know, dealing with the situation.
So, really, I believe the question is, yes, on both counts. One, it is a very much a preventive role, but it's also a role model role within the school for the students. So, it's kinda twofold. Not only are we protecting the students from any outside dangers that may be coming in, but we're also making it easier or accessible to them, to an officer if so needed, and for education's sake as well.
Can I make another comment?
Yes, sir.
Jody, I appreciate your comment. You know, there are some high schools that are even considering domestic violence counselors in the high school now. And they're trying to get the coaches, you know, oftentimes, students, the best role model is a coach. And they're trying to get the coaches involved in, to really talking about bullying, how males respond to females, domestic violence and so forth. So, I think we're gonna see more and more of this, unfortunately, in our society. And, you know, where does it end? You know, we've gotta do something to save our children. And I'm not against a pro officer at all.
Thank you.
I just think it's, you know, it's sad that we have to do this, as Doug, or Mark said.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Is there anyone else that would be opposed to the pro officer? If everyone's here in favor, we could keep accolades going all night. But is anyone opposed to, this is a discussion that council needs to know, because if there were gonna be a majority of folks here that would be opposed to the PRO officer, then the council would seriously have to take a look. I've only had two people come to me from outside of the area or in my constituency that has said, "I do not want the pro officer there." Ninety-eight percent, and that's gotta be about 45 people have already said, "Yes. Let's get him in there. It's worth the money," as Judge Hall had mentioned. So, if there are no other objections, then we'll just assume from the council, I would expect you to make, do a little bit more research on this and come up with a decision, as police civil service right now is in the process of doing the eligible list. We need to have an idea by January if the city of Buckhannon is willing to put Mark Stewart in as the PRO officer. And then how do we proceed from there, okay? That'll be your homework. Speaking of school. And I really like the idea, not to use the pun, but we're being proactive here. We've got a pro officer, we're being proactive to make sure that none of these things happen. All right. Now, I know something that's really a bone of contention, and it has been probably for many decades, and that would be our downtown parking. Before we begin that discussion, I will note that the city has been looking at how it's gonna proceed with parking. There have been many different solutions and meetings and committees and drawings and designs on how we would solve the parking problem downtown. Fifty years of this problem, and they still haven't come up with a solution. So, I'm not so sure the city of Buckhannon and its council can come up with a solution. I will mention this, though, that the Spring Street parking lot is in its final stages. We should have that in the next couple of weeks. That has increased the parking. We are also looking at the parking down at the end of Madison. And we are also in consideration of getting rid of parking meters. We're also in consideration of the permit parking and how we might want to fix that. But I will say, and we have downtown parking here, I will open that up to even more, because we have some serious parking concerns in the outside areas of downtown that I've almost had issues with. So, the next discussion is downtown parking. Let's go back to our original format here. And if you have a question about downtown parking, or a comment, or a suggestion, please stand up. If you haven't given your name yet, please do, and then address it to a particular council member. So, who wants to go first? Let's see if somebody else will go first. All right. Yes, you can go first.
Thank you. CJ Rylands. We don't have a parking shortage in Buckhannon. We have a parking problem. Signage is not, doesn't exist, really. You know, if someone's coming from outside, you don't know where to go. And when you get there, you don't know what the rules are. So, we are, and with our ticketing system, we are shooting the first-time visitor along with the chronic violator. I would propose that we begin some kind of device, some handheld device that either can take a picture or enter the state and the license plate number and see if that person has ever violated anything before in parking. If not, they give them a little note, says, "Welcome to Buckhannon. You violated our rules. Don't, you know, don't do it again," whatnot. If that number comes up again, the second time, they get a certified letter from the city, says, "You've been warned twice. The next time, you're gonna get it." Sedona, Arizona does this and nails them for 75 bucks after, but they're only ticketing the first-time violator. I tell a short story that Nikki Bowman, the publisher and editor for West Virginia Living, was in town. I met her at the visitor's center. We talked about a little free library. She said she wanted one. I said, "I got one next door." I put it on a dolly, and I hooked it to her car. As we're approaching her car, when she parked at the corner of Spring and Main, I could see the yellow sticker under her thing. She had gotten a $25 ticket while she was here researching stories to promote our community. I took the ticket and paid it, loaded the little free library up, and off she went. But we can't, we have to stop doing those things and, but still try to modify the behavior of the chronic violator on long, on the 24/7 lease of space to the people. You know, there's 168 hours, I believe, in a week. And for creating the highest utilization of that space, if you're working downtown, that's 40 hours. If you're living, 12 hours times 7, that's 84 hours. You still get 44 more hours of that parking space that could be utilized, but not if you're leasing that certain space for one person for whenever they want it. So, what I would propose, if there is going to be a body of leased spaces, that you sell permits to park within that number of spaces. Say there's 40 spaces, I would feel comfortable leasing, giving permission for 60 cars to park in those 40 spaces at their discretion. And if, for chance, they're all full, that person gets a wave of the hand, currently similar to the wave of the hand you're giving to the people in North Spring Street Lot, to go to the next proximate meter or whatnot and park and not be issued a citation. We've had multiple discussions in planning commission and community meetings and whatnot about this subject. It's time that we fix it. I know others have been studying this, and we're working on a comprehensive plan, but it's, and briefly, you know, I had a conversation with the mayor of Lewisburg about this specific topic. And he said, "Years ago, they had a meter made, and they did a cost-benefit analysis of all this, and they decided it made no sense. So, all their public parking is free." And I asked, "Well, what keeps someone from parking in a store in their cars in there?" And he said, "Well, it's enforced by the public. If there's a, you know, if CJ Rylands is parking in front of his business, somebody calls the city and says, 'Hey, Rylands is parking out here again.'" And after whatever the number of times I get turned in, then they send a uniformed officer to me, and they say, "Mr. Rylands, we're all in this together. We're trying to leave our parking spaces for visitors and tourists and customers. Are you gonna work with us on this?" "Yes, sir, officer. I got the message." But, you know, we need to be thoughtful, and we need to, you know, try to create high turnover. There is a, there is a role for enforcement, I think, because otherwise the turnover in that parking space is going to be diminished. People are gonna park there, and other cities are having issues like that right now.
Thank you, Mr. Rod. You have some very good points. I will point out that I have had discussions with Councilwoman Alba and with Chair Lady Lipase. And there will be a planning commission meeting coming in January, and they will be tasked by the mayor to come up with a plan to city council for a recommendation on five points of parking, and how we can enforce those, and how they want us to proceed. Just for a matter of fact, so you know. Any other questions or comments regarding parking downtown, please? Don't be afraid, unless CJ pretty much wrapped it all up for you. Yes, Mr. Reed has a survey, as I recall.
I have circulated most of what I have to say, at least to the city council and the mayor, but some specific suggestions. One, recognize special parking requirements in certain businesses, like beauty shops, who need more than the two hours that are limited. If we're gonna limit parking to two hours, then we need to suggest that they... If we're going to limit parking to two hours, then we need to suggest that they put the business somewhere else. If we can accommodate them some way, fine. Provide parking for employees by the individual business or at a minimum rate off of Main Street and enforce that. Meters on Main Street. Consider a meter refund, fee refund for merchant when a purchase of certain value is made, so that they can get their money back if they put it in a meter. Work out a way for meter refund for out-of-towners visiting places like Chamber of Commerce, Division Bureau, and City Hall that don't sell, to refund their meter fees, such as a token or outright refund. And six, work with the county commission to solve parking needs of courthouse customers and employees, which I understand from your parking officer is one of the biggest problems.
It is. And we'll be having that discussion, by the way, at the next city-county dual meeting at the end of this month.
Mr. Mayor, Joe, I have a copy of your information that you just distributed out and get one from you, but the mayor gave me his.
That was just a survey. If you want to give her the suggestions, I don't think I have the suggestions. I got it on my email though, if you remind me.
You do? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
First of all, I'm not sure if two hours is long enough time for people to, you know, we do have different businesses downtown. You want to go eat, say, at CJ's. What if you're in there two hours and then you've got to worry about paying a parking ticket? I can't go eat and then go over to, say, get my hair done. Somebody else, I don't care. But two hours, I don't think really is sufficient if you want to keep people to come downtown. Another thing, I did not realize this after all these years. I had a customer in the other day, and she was in my shop ten, eleven minutes past the two hours. She got a twenty-five dollar ticket, and I graciously went and paid it for her because I didn't, you know, I wasn't paying attention, she wasn't either, but, you know, just talking. But if you park at a meter and you get a ticket, you have twenty-four hours to pay that ticket within the two dollars extra. My customers was twenty-five dollars for eleven minutes over the two hours. I don't think that's fair. So I personally think, not just because it was my situation, but if you want people to go to different businesses downtown, I don't think two hours is enough time for people.
Thank you, Mrs. Barry. Yes, and to you.
Well, having been the recipient of two of those twenty-five dollar tickets, I certainly think that that should be done away with. I really think that there should be no limit of parking on Main Street. However, there should be some limitations in certain places as to how much you could park. We were in a discussion yesterday, or today, or sometime, I'm not sure which day it was, time flies. Fifteen-minute limit in certain places, if you want to run into a drugstore, takes you fifteen minutes to get a prescription. Thirty minutes in others, and then perhaps the rest of it unlimited on Main Street with heavier portion of parking outside, further into the places. I think the kiosk is a great thing that we're going to do here, have a kiosk where you put your money in, you park in place, and they know at City Hall when that expires, the number one oh seven expires, and they haven't checked out yet that there's a potential for a two-dollar fine or something like that. However, unless it's been corrected, I believe there's no provisions in the kiosk to accept credit cards. Is that correct, Mayor?
No.
There is no provision. I think that's a mistake. We've not discussed the kiosk at council yet, but I think that if you're going to have a kiosk there, most of us don't carry cash in our pockets anymore. I get a Morgantown or Clarksburg and pay my credit card in a kiosk to pay. If I don't have any cash, it's just like stopping at a meter up here. I don't have a quarter, I don't have a quarter, so I'm taking a chance on a two-dollar ticket. But if you're going to take a kiosk, it really needs to have the access for the person to pay with a credit card or sometime in the future, even as Bryce was saying yesterday, swipe your phone next to it and pay it.
Yeah, that's the way for the future.
If we don't have that technology, I see no reason for having a kiosk there whatsoever.
Are we doing on Spring Street?
Yes, we are.
That's the Spring Street one, yeah. There are lots of issues with parking. And as Mayor alluded to, a lot of them don't have to do with downtown. We'll get into that in a little bit, but.
Well, we'll get into that when we start to talk about it at the planning.
Yeah.
That would be a good place.
It will be, it will be discussed.
C J's right, we've talked about this for, gosh, for so many years, it's ridiculous.
It's in the twenty-twenty plan, wasn't it twenty-twelve, and then the twenty-fifty, but now it's in the twenty-twenty plan to do something about downtown.
Joe, I only get a half an hour from Mayor.
And technically, we could actually, the council could make decisions to unilaterally start making changes on everything downtown. But this council is not trying to do that. What we do want to do is have the planning commission come up with their suggestions, because they are the body of average citizens, that will get together and give us the five solutions for city council. Then, with their recommendation, we will make the decisions to start changing some of those if we can possibly do so. Mrs. Bray, you had something to say?
Ron, I think you had some good suggestions about limiting the time in certain spaces, but I don't think that will help. One of the biggest problems we have with parking is that it's inconsistent. You know, one place is twenty-four-seven, another place is just this hour. We need to keep the cars moving so that there's spaces for people coming downtown, but it also needs to be consistent, which is hard to do. It's a big question when you start looking at the planning. Please keep that in mind.
Can I stand up?
Yes, sure. Yeah, I am, I'm standing up.
Well, signage means a lot, too, for parking.
All right. Any other comments or questions?
I got to stand up, too.
Yes, sir. Oh, I forgot about you.
I'm Stan Rexford, I'm not a citizen of Buchanan, neither, but I have a building downtown, and I'm planning on moving into town next few years. My question is, why do we still have no parking on Main Street at nighttime? I don't think the street sweeper goes every night. It goes maybe a couple of times a month or whatever. Why can we not change the parking so you can park on Main Street overnight?
Twenty-four hours, because it's only a certain time. It's not, it's from what?
Three to seven.
Three to seven. And I know that some bar owners that have had, or people that work in the clubs, come out later at that time and have had tickets. That's something we'll have to look at. I don't have the answer as to why they implemented that way, except for the street sweeper.
I can understand that. You can have maybe the first and third Wednesday, no parking overnight on Main Street or something like that. But every night, I don't think, I don't think it's needed anymore.
No, and quite honestly, that was one of the first issues I started out discussing, is that street sweeper. We are going to start giving out a schedule in the newspaper on which days, which streets they're going on, so that the citizens can know, so they can either move their car, because I just washed it, it got dusted with the dust, which really did not make me happy.
What about snowplow?
And then, and it could be snowplows at night, but we are looking at that issue.
Yeah.
I'm assuming that's what was implemented. Any other questions on the, yes, Dr. Reed?
Just one additional thought. We've talked about the distance people have to walk to parking here. I think that people who shop in Buchanan don't want to walk as far as they have to walk at the mall.
Okay.
Quickly, yesterday, we had this conversation at noon, a parking meeting we had. So I counted my steps in one city block. So from this whole block, from Cana Street to Spring Street, it's a hundred and twenty-five steps. So my wife and I went to Walmart last night, and I started counting out loud from when I parked the car to walk in to Walmart. She distanced herself from me. I was doing that, but it's two-hundred-and-twenty-five steps from my normal, you know, parking spot to the eggs. So theoretically, I could park in Ja Boon Park and come to C J Maggie's and have just gotten eggs. So, but perceptually, we don't feel, think that way. And so somehow, we have to, you know, change people's perception of the distances involved. I mean, I heard yesterday in a meeting, the average New Yorker walks four miles a day. And if you've ever been to Las Vegas, you better have comfortable shoes on just to get to the lobby. So we're small and compact, but there's some perceptual issues.
I would agree with that. I don't think there's, I've been to a downtown where I did not have to walk one or two blocks. Unless you get really lucky, and there's a spot that somebody's just pulling out of, that is really unheard of, that you would be able to park right in front of the business that you're going to be going in a downtown area. And some of our side streets, that's an issue as well, as far as how far you have to walk because of the size of the roads. I think maybe perhaps, yes.
I was going to say, one amusing thing out of all this, you think parking's a fun thing, topic at City Hall? Come to the college campus.
How many spaces do you have?
Oh, my gosh, this is crazy.
No, not right, Bob?
How many do you still, in excess of what you have?
Oh, I don't know what the numbers are, Ron. I just know that they don't want to walk.
They don't want to walk there. It's like overbooking on an airplane, I hate that.
Yes, Robin.
I am really concerned about the enforcement of the handicap parking. I would like to see more of the fines given out to people that do not have the handicap permit to park that do, and it happens all over town. So I would like to enforce that a lot better.
We'll make note of that, and we'll make the officers know as well. Mr. Cortez, you had a question?
No, I have a comment and a question I'm going to direct to Mr. Doss. I have seen parking meters here in North, South, and West Virginia that accept credit cards.
Yes.
In the meter itself.
Yes.
And when you started this conversation, you made a statement that you might think about getting rid of parking meters. So my question is directed to Mr. Doss. How much revenue would be lost if we do get rid of the parking meters?
The cost of replacement of parking meters, when we looked at this versus a kiosk box, were basically about the same. They get beat up all of the time. So basically, the decision to have the kiosk there essentially pays for what we're averaging when we replace meters over a certain period of time.
The question is just to get rid of the parking meters altogether.
Why wouldn't we get rid of parking?
No, how much money would be lost if we did get rid of all the parking meters and just want it to be free parking?
Oh, gosh, I wouldn't even be able to give you a number, Dennis. I could get back to you, but.
My number.
You gotta go get the debt, which ways and which you lost.
Right. Sorry.
Yeah, if you want to get back to us at City Hall, we would be happy to give you that information. As far as outside of downtown parking, when the city was designed by the great architects back then, of course, we didn't have such big vehicles, of course, we didn't have, there's a lot of on-street parking that nowadays you would not have, you would have a driveway. The city is also looking at how can we handle, for one instance, and nothing against this street, Central Avenue, we can't even get a snowplow through there because it's on both sides. So the city council is now, and I've also tasked the comprehensive, the planning commission, to take a look at making one side of a road as the parking, for instance, on Central Avenue instead of both sides of the road. Are there any other questions or comments on parking as we move on? Yes, Miss?
I would just like to make a comment as, there have been a lot of us, create Buchanan, Dr. Reed, and others that have put a lot of time into studying parking, and I want council to know that I've been working on a parking study for several months. And I think that what the city needs to do, which is already, apparently you alluded to that already for the January planning commission meeting, that a comprehensive parking management plan, looking at every single space across the downtown core, really needs to be developed. And it hasn't ever been that, there's never been a management plan that was designed, you might say. It's kind of been a reactionary thing, but, and there's no doubt that the parking downtown directly impacts the development of downtown as it relates to people being able to get to the businesses. And so I think the only, I'd like to just suggest to council that the only number-one issue that really is a glaring issue is to be able to lease a space to a business twenty-four seven, because that means if an entity is a business, they probably only use it from nine to five, eight to five, whatever, meaning that that spot cannot be used by someone staying in an apartment for the evening hours. And so an overall management plan will maximize the use of each space we have and hopefully minimize the fines. And for those of you that don't know, there was some question about the costs. There were twenty-five thousand dollars worth of fines last year, and thirteen thousand of that was Main Street twenty-five dollar hits. So that's five-hundred-and-fifty people that were really upset with the city for that twenty-five. Not to say they weren't repeat offenders or, you know, blatant, you know, locals, or, I mean, we don't know. So at this point, there's no system in place to know if someone is a local that's been there many times, or if they've just come through town once. But that's, we can't have that. We can have a handheld device that identifies that plate without it being integrated into a big database, but it can just simply be a handheld device that says, yeah, I saw that car in October, and we gave it a warning. You know?
Those are really good suggestions, and I hope, Mayor, you took that down for the planning, for the commission as well. Okay, I'm going to move on, since it is getting a little late, and I know some of you are here, particularly to talk about fair and affordable housing in Buchanan. The reason why this is on the agenda that has come to the attention of council, has also come to my attention from a couple of organizations, that we are seriously in need of some fair and affordable housing, particularly at the low to moderate income level. We have homelessness here in Buchanan. If you did not know that, it is a fact. I talked to one of the counselors who works within the community with homeless folks. Unfortunately, and I'm sure I'm not the only one, I know I've had discussions with council and probably with some of you out in the audience, that because of the oil and gas situation, which I might add is now going to start dropping in the next month or two, because they're pulling out of the Lewis County, Webster County, their work's almost done with that pipeline. But keeping in mind that the ACL has now been approved through FERC and will be on its way, which is going to double up the amount of the previous pipeline that's coming through. What we're going to try to solve, or what the city's going to try to do, and what I'm personally doing, what the Housing Authority is looking at, how can we build either another new type of housing authority, not unlike Kegel Drive, but on the modern townhome type of basis? How can we have some fair and affordable housing downtown? How can the, how can the city help invest or help develop in any way that it can for fair and affordable housing, not only in the downtown area, but throughout the city? We are now, through one of the home rule, which you probably read about, Robbie, is the onsite citations and the vacant property list. We were now, and within the next month, and by January, will have the list of all of those property owners. I'm not, I'm sure almost everyone in here knows that a lot of the issues that we have with these houses that are vacant or abandoned is those property owners do not live here. They're off somewhere else, and to try to contact them, to try to do something about their property is almost impossible. We have put in place a very, very strict and expensive vacant property ordinance, which at first, first year that you don't have a house, or it's vacant, and you're not maintaining it, then it's a hundred dollars. Next year, it goes to three hundred dollars. Next year, it doubles up from there, and it continues to double until somebody does something about that property. I think the city of Buchanan should invest some of its citizens' money as well in helping the organizations, not unlike a mountain cap, not unlike our Housing Authority, to actually have low and affordable income housing, to address the issues of those that may not have it right now, and for future growth of this town, where are we going to be able to put some of that development? So that when people can move here, they have the houses to move into. It is very hard right now to find a house to rent at all. I have talked to many people, unless you go out to one of the trailer courts, one of the other smaller areas, you're going to, that's about the only properties you're going to get. I will also note this, I've got many complaints at City Hall to my office about the increases in the amount of rent that is happening with landlords, and the fact that with the slightest change or offense within their lease, the landlord will evict that person, primarily on the basis because the oil and gas company will come in and fill that spot or fill that property at double the amount of rent that probably was being garnered at the time from the landlord. Those are issues that are strong, that are coming up to city, it's coming to me, I know it's been coming to city council. City would like to do something about that. I have asked Jill Marsh, the Housing Authority, to pull together, I would like to have a meeting with the landlords' association. I think that they are the key to helping us out on that. I would like to have a committee formed, city and from the county and, because the county has to be included in this, county landlords also, property owners have to be included in this, because just because it's a city issue, a lot of people live outside of the city, and there's a lot of available properties out there. I am engaging the Housing Authority on looking at building either a new facility, or they have the opportunity to buy a piece of property and fix it up to make have the opportunity to buy a piece of property and fix it up to make it for affordable housing. So, that's what we're working on now. What the council would like to know is, from the landlords or the property owners that are here, and from the regular citizens, if this is an issue that you feel that the city council should continue to look at, and whether or not you are personally or have seen any of the issues that we're talking about.
But, Mary, I think I'd be remiss if my position is not the same as your position.
I'm sure.
And, you know, I've told you this. I think you have... I think we as a city, the council, have to be very, very careful in this area. And there... It's full of landmines. You know, we definitely need legal advice when we do anything in this area. I would want to get the landlord association involved with it, but, you know, I think one of the bottom lines we have in fair housing is we have unbelievable, too many people that do not make any money, unfortunately, you know? And I don't want us to sound like we're... I'm not a Democrat, I'm not a Republican, but I don't think Westland should eliminate their fee, have everybody go there for free. That's not going to work. And I think we have to... This is a very, very difficult... The federal government is so intrusive in rules and regulations, and the state is too, that it's a landmine. And I'm not insensitive to people that are homeless or have issues in making the rent payment, but we've got to be really careful. That we... You know, Keith Buchanan and Joe Reed made a comment, CJ to some degree. What is the mission of this city? And I think we have to be very careful about how we define our mission for the future. Thank you.
No, thank you. And quite honestly, in rebuttal to that, it's about time the city, actually, since nothing's getting done, take a leadership role, at least pulling the people together to have that discussion. I think that is our job.
I don't mind having a discussion.
I'll open this floor up to any of the citizens that would like to comment or question on this. Yes, ma'am?
My name is Erica Kalinic. I'm an attorney in town, and I can tell you it's definitely a problem. It's not just low to median income problems either. Anytime I hire an attorney, the first thing I hear is, "I can't find a place to live." The attorney I just hired commuted from Morgantown for three months before he found an opening for any place that he could live here. I also advise a sorority at Westland. A lot of those women try to stay here in Buchanan and are blowing up my phone over the summer. "Erica, can you help us find a place to live?" Because as soon as we call someplace, it's full. And those are young professionals that are trying to stay in Buchanan or relocate to Buchanan from other areas of West Virginia that simply can't do that because they can't find any place to live. Low, medium, or high income, they can't find a place at all. So, it's definitely an issue that... I mean, I don't know if it's the place of council, but somebody needs to address it because it's certainly an issue, and it's certainly affecting development and economy of the city.
Did you have something, Keith?
No, I was just reflecting what Dave said. I think the priority should be on finding, creating, turning those dumps into reliable properties for people that generate enough income that they'll actually spend something in the city. And then, secondarily, if there are other income groups and other housing that you have to look at, it's just, it seems like it's almost counterproductive, but you have two missions.
Yep, I agree with that. CJ, you got something?
I attended a focus group in Elkins this morning by the State Main Street Association, and it was all business owners in downtown. And these lifelong residents talked about their community being transformed in a negative way by people that I've... That they believe the federal government is bringing in from other large metropolitan areas and warehousing in their, some of their housing and old buildings in downtown Elkins. And that a lot of the problems coming out of them, of those residents in those places, are transforming the downtown area. And if you didn't see on Facebook, Elkins was listed as one of the five, the fifth most dangerous city in the state. So, you know, I mean, they can make these things sound all kind of different ways, but I'd also be cognizant as a city that other communities have warehouses, you know, disabled or homeless or other special groups of citizens in their downtowns. And once that becomes a majority occupational, you know, entity, then no one else wants to live there. I mean, you can look at downtown Fairmont or Clarksburg where the large old buildings are converted. Now, that sounds a little insensitive, but in some regard, what I'm hearing is high rents and scarcity. That's a good thing. But, if we're missing out on attracting young professionals that want to live here, you know, if we can attract those people to be living downtown and the rest, then it's all good. So, try to be compassionate, but, you know, how do you balance that without disrupting, you know, what's perceived as a lifelong quality of life issue for residents?
It really is. It is, but somebody's got to take it on.
The young professionals are the future of our town. The old folks like me are going to be leaving, but the young professionals don't have a place to go. I would like to sell my two-and-a-half-story house because I can't go up and down the steps as often as I used to, and to get something more affordable, but I can't because I make like the new Pringle place up there.
Pringle tree.
Pringle...
Pringle house.
Pringle house, okay. Too much money, but not enough to get a place that's... I can live in. It's been the case, it's like education in this country, you know? I didn't make... I made too much money to... I couldn't get grants for my kids to go to college, but I didn't make enough to send them, so I didn't have any bills paid. It's an ongoing from the time you get out of college until you end up going to see Jeff St. Clair. There's no getting out of it, and we need to work on something like that to make it more affordable for people that want to stay here. Seniors want to stay here, too. I don't want to move to Fairmont or someplace like that. God forbid, Fairmont. No, but I'd like to be close to my grandkids, but can't afford that. So, we need to do something about getting some affordable housing for the young people that are getting out of college, and for the people that want to stay here and retire here and to contribute to our communities. It's a sad situation, but I know people getting out of college that are newlyweds and everything, and they want to go to a place to rent, they can't find anything for less than $1,200 a month. If they can find that.
But, we also need to recognize that if you go out and get a... You can get a 30-year mortgage today, that's so... I mean, I remember the first mortgage I had was 13%, 14%. And, you know, this is a very complex problem. I'm not saying we don't discuss it, but we have to look at all the different sides to the equation.
I just think there is a need for affordable housing, and I'm not thinking about the homeless because I've met some of the so-called homeless that don't want to do anything to help themselves here.
Yes, and that's where we have to look at. What are the alternative ways that we can help those folks that perhaps are in a situation that they're, it's of their own making? Alyssa?
Hi, Alyssa Mills. I have a question. We've got a new, I guess he's a zoning officer, whatever his former title is.
Housing Enforcement Officer.
As a landlord, I've experienced, because we put our whole retirement, Terry and I have, in that building on North Canawell Street. One of the managers from Lowe's rented from us for a year because those particular apartments have a year lease on them, and he actually said to us, "I never dreamed that I'd find a place like that in Buchanan." They... The one downside, though, is they're all one-bedroom, so families, it kind of hurts. My concern is, though, I've had people come and look at them who ended up taking them after we did the background check, but they've made comments like, "We can't find any place else that was even close to this." There... You know, I've heard stories about apartments that had major plumbing problems, places that had stuff running down the walls from upper floors. I mean, is there something being done about that? Because if there are apartments, and if they're in that kind of condition, A, there shouldn't be anybody living in them, but B, if they were fixed up, then people probably wouldn't mind paying the higher rent.
That's... And you bring up a very good point. That's actually one of the explorations we have to make, is determining where's the investment going to be? Is it going to be in... Would it be in an apartment building, for instance? Or would it be in buying smaller homes to turn into multifamily homes? Would it be into developing or helping a developer do another Pringle house? The county... Keep in mind, the Pringle house is based upon a tax grant program, and the county commission had to back that. So, it's a grant or funding that came from the federal government through the county government to provide the Pringle house facility. They're going to expand that. There's also another one, which I'm sure most of you are aware, that is also being built over in the Tenerton area. That is the low to moderate income housing as well. Another is a tax grant program that's being done. But, I think fair and affordable, I think it's about time that we get all the parties together, particularly from the landlords' association, because they have their teeth and they've got their hands on... They understand it, they know it, they know who we're talking about, and they know probably how to fix this. But, there's a lot of issues that, as we are now learning, and I hope all of you is learning as well, and I keep looking at Kathy. Kathy and I went to a seminar, and I refer to her as the expert as far as housing and development, because she's got all the statistics on a lot of the issues here in Upsher County. And she's been... She's also on the Board of Directors for the West Virginia Housing Thor... What is it called? The West Virginia...
I serve on the West Virginia Housing Policy Task Group, and I also serve on the Board of Community Works in West Virginia as a representative of their board and their Neighbor Works Association, and that's a whole long explanation of what a Neighbor Works is. But, we really... The problem, I think, partly in our community is that there's never been a comprehensive analysis of the housing stock that's here and what is needed, and what are the growth sectors. The West Virginia Housing Development Fund, who does the grants in this community for affordable housing, and also has loan products for low-income people in the community, and helps finance those types of credit projects, or some of them, has done some study on the affordable end of the spectrum that, you know, that's available to be studied. But, there is the workforce housing that's also not, you know, needs to be considered. It is an economic development issue, and economic development authorities are encouraged to be involved in housing because it's at the crux of everything in our community. I mean, your hospitals, your schools, your housing are going to drive the people who are going to live in your community, because they're going to look at those assets to even think about coming here. So, when they have a struggle to find a place to live, they end up going somewhere else. So, you need that, you know, that entry level for young homeowners. You need, you know, for your schoolteachers and police officers and waitresses and, you know, so you need every variety of housing possible. And there needs to be a comprehensive study to see, what do we have? What do we need? And then, plan with what's available land-wise, because that's an issue in Buchanan. You know, you can't build in the flood zone, not that there's much property even available in the city at this point. So, I think there's just a whole comprehensive study that needs to be accomplished.
And quite honestly, I think most of you realize as well, a lot of... When you're young, you get to the college age level, you're at your first job level, whatever, you want to be in the place, in a city that has the amenities that a young person would really enjoy, be it from, you know, Morgantown area, Charleston. You're not... If you grew up in Buchanan, West Virginia, and unless you're in a business, or you're just passionate, or you're a farmer perhaps, you love agriculture, you're going to want to go away to explore and see the things out there. But, how many of you would say that you would come back to the Buchanan because if you have a family, this is the place you would want to live? This is where you want to bring up your family. Unfortunately, you come back, you may not be able to find a house to live in. You may not be able to find a good home to live in. You may find a home that is way outside of your range or way below where you would really want to be. That's where the city really needs to start thinking about that as a development idea. And that's why it's on the agenda, it's broached the subject with the citizens as well, and to announce that the city is going to be looking at pulling together, again, another committee type of think-take to figure out how can the city address those issues and make an impact and be able to help future development and to make sure that the housing is there. I have about two hours, so I'm going to skip your question.
I have just one short question.
No. All right, one last thing, and I know everyone's tired, and if you want to stand up, you can stand up at this point, and I did not intend it for the beach, this two-hour-long discussion. But, it is about compensation for city council members. Just for a review, it has not happened in over 14 years. I know there was an article in the paper comparing, I don't know why they brought the mayor into it, but what mayors make throughout and what council members make throughout. I want to make sure that everyone understands here, though, as well, how much work that this council has been doing, and why it is important that if you want to attract really good council members to come sit on council, or even to become the mayor or run for mayor, you need to make it worth their while to do so. You also need to, depending upon the kind of quality you're going to get, if that mayor is going to be a full-time mayor that this city deserves. A lot of times in the past, you've had mayors that had another job. How do you juggle the two jobs? Well, it's kind of easy when you let a Michael Doss or your administration team or the rest of your crew do all the work for you, or even your council make all the decisions for you. That's one of the discussions that this council has been having, and Mr. Thomas brought up the idea, it's about time at 14 years.
It's actually eleven and a half.
Eleven and a half years. That's close enough to me.
Close enough to 14.
I round up usually.
Yeah.
How the compensation package has existed now? I don't know if council... Well, it's a matter of public record. Do you want to tell them how much you make?
Yeah, I think we get $4,800 a year as a council person, so nobody is on this council run to make money. You know, we are community-oriented. We get $200 a month for being on a board, like one of the utility boards, a consolidated board. We get $200 a month for being on the council. The mayor gets $22,500. I believe the recorder, Michael, is $9,500. Is that correct?
That's actually eight.
Is it eight? Okay.
Eight thousand.
And there are no benefits. I know when I first ran for council in 2004, one of my neighbors said, "Oh, you're going to get health insurance." Well, we don't get health insurance, and I don't think we should, quite frankly. It's a part-time position. But, for example, this month, we're all having seven, at least seven meetings. We all have responsibilities on other boards, whether it's Consolidated, or Water, or Sewer, Development Authority, Stockard Youth, Planning Commission, goes on and on. And I just think we shouldn't wait eleven and a half years before you have an increase. I also think it's really important, when I first ran, the increase in the city council, the mayor and the recorder were not announced until after the deadline application for the dispositions. I don't think that's right. I think we need to discuss what's appropriate, compare us to other municipalities, what the timeline is, do we have increased responsibilities or lessen our responsibilities? I threw out an idea that if you're a city council, you should be required to attend every single board, not just the Consolidated, but the Water, the Sewer, and so forth, because we have ultimate responsibility for passing the rates. So, I think that this is a worthwhile discussion, and I think we should have some increase. And what the mayor said, do you want a full-time mayor, or you want a part-time mayor? Should they have responsibilities with another organization or not? And it's an ongoing discussion. I would encourage people to call me to let me know what they think. They can have me in effigy if they want to, I don't care. But, you know, don't wait. Don't wait for 12 years. Let's do something more appropriate.
And at this point, I'm going to allow the council members to talk, and then I'll let the audience, because I think each one of them has their own point that they want to say on this, and then we'll take questions from the audience. Mary, what do you got?
It doesn't apply to me because I won't be running for office this next time, so don't put your sympathy on poor Mary.
And I would add, the recorders would not change as well. By the letter of the law, you cannot increase a sitting increase... You cannot increase the compensation package for anybody that's sitting currently. It has to be under a new election cycle. So, Mary's and the city recorder's position would not increase, it would just be the ones that are running for reelection. Mrs. Cooper, you got any comments on this?
I think everybody deserves a raise. I've been on here going on 16 years. I've had one raise, it started out $200, and I got my raise, first raise, when David came on. Do go a lot, a lot of meetings, and... But, we're all here for the people. We want what's best for the people, and if you feel there's other people who can do a job, come and put your name in in January. That's all I can say. But, you know, right now, I am on Fourth of July Committee. I started that last year. I'm continuing it this year. That takes lots of time, and I'm getting paid for it, and it's very hard to get people to volunteer to do anything. I'm working on a Christmas committee, same thing here. We still have the people who want to bitch about everything, but they don't want to come help. And so, I'm doing it because I want my town to continue looking good and doing great. And while I'm on it, I do want to say I really appreciate the people who have business... And while I'm on it, I do want to say, I really appreciate the people who have businesses downtown, who wants to keep it thriving. I believe that's one reason why we still get the students that we do at Wesleyan College, because that's an attraction to them, that they can walk, they feel safe, and go downtown to go out to eat, to do whatever. And I would love to have more people like Bryson and CJ come down and keep the Buchanan area thriving, and renew buildings, do whatever, because I think that's the only way that it's going to continue being a good place to come down to. We don't want to look like Weston. And I still agree, we don't have to be Bridgeport or Clarksville or anybody else do our anything.
Thank you, Ms. Capery. Ron.
Right now that we've alienated Weston and all those other places.
Hey, they're our sister city.
Your sister city. I know. Don't want to look like our sister, I don't want to. When I took this job, I didn't even know we got a salary. I ran for it, I thought it was just a thing where you ran, you served your city. And really, I would continue, whether I got a raise or not. I've served since 1971 in some form of public service, starting as county clerk's office and working with county government. And then I, I took a 22-year absence, and, but I still dealt with the public, and then I was in the elections business. We printed ballots, we ran elections for, for different municipalities and counties and everything. And we, I never got away from the public service. And then when I retired, I had a year's worth of blissful retirement, and then my wife retired, and she said, you got to get out of the house, you got to start doing something, because I can't stand you here. And she suggested I run for city council, and I did, and I'm certainly glad I did. I enjoy city council. I enjoy these meetings. I enjoy talking to the people and getting 12 phone calls a night about somebody's dog barking. That doesn't bother me at all, unless it's four o'clock in the morning. Then I say, call Doug Loudon, because maybe he'll take care of that for you. But, yeah.
Sorry, for again.
No, I, I am for it, for the amount of work we have to do and everything. I, I think an increase in salary would be the way to go. It's not going to make a difference to me whether I run again or not, because I am going to run again. But I also think we're doing the right thing by announcing it now before the election, so that will give people out there the opportunity, if they want to say, oh, you know, they're not making just peanuts now, even though it's just a half a peanut to a whole peanut going to. If somebody wants to, to discuss the salary, that's why, if that's an effort to make them run for the office, fine. We deserve it, and anybody coming in deserves it, and they deserve to know that they're going to get it, and not have something in secret kept and passed after.
Another attribute you have, you really do like to talk. That's always a good thing.
I can't stand to talk. I wish somebody would do something about it.
You got anything on that, Mr. Simons?
Well, I ran at the last election, not for money, because I love Buchanan, and I want to make it a better place. I actually lost that election by one vote. And so later I got appointed to this position, and I'm just happy to be here.
You made it pearl.
But in the future, you know, you might want to make the, the salaries a little higher, so that you can get quality, quality people to run for it. There's a lot of business decisions that have to be made by people who know business, who knows how to make money, how to keep money, how to keep, you know, projects completed, and roads taken care of, and all that. And so I think with a little bit more money, you would get more qualified people.
Very good. Thank you, council. I'll open the floor to the, to the, to the audience. Mr. Skinner.
Just one quick question. I know it was in the paper a couple weeks ago, but I can't remember. What are we going, what are we, what's the proposed going to from the increase?
We have no idea. We have never discussed publicly what we want to get to. And we've never discussed among ourselves. We've thrown out, we've thrown out ideas. It'd be nice to have $27,000, $28,000 for this.
Robbie, did you know that the city council and the mayor didn't have to bring this before the public? We could have brought it up, put it on the agenda, as happened in the past, and this, this got just pushed right on in.
We certainly appreciate it.
I appreciate the fact that y'all here because of it, too.
We just, I mean, I just was curious to know if there was a number out there of an increase of where you are now versus?
Well, what we've done is, what we've done is take a look at, we've gotten the statistics from the other cities on compensation for city council members. We're taking a look at how many times they meet. For instance, some councils only meet once a month, some councils meet twice a month, some meet four times a month. So we're looking at that, we're looking at the compensation, we're looking at the class of the size of the municipality as well, one, two, three, or four, and we're going to be comparing and contrasting that. But before we even decided to go any further, or there was going to be any issues with the consideration for increasing the compensation for council members, we wanted to bring it before the audience, before the citizens make the announcement, let you know, we've been talking about it at council a couple times, some of you go to the council members, a lot of you don't. So here's the opportunity for us to hear, is this something we should even consider going on? Because you're the ones that ultimately are going to make the decision, particularly since there's an election next year.
And you need to get involved, because, you know, a little while ago, there were people that were on boards that got X amount of dollars a month, every county, $100 or $200 a month, or whatever, and that counted as years of service for them. And oftentimes, those people be on a board for 10 years, and then get a job at the organization. And, you know, there was a lot of things that the state legislature has cleaned up in the last couple of years. But I also think they need to get a little bit better dealings with municipalities versus county commissions.
Right. Did that answer your question, Robbie, as far as where we're at on, we have to come up with a number, or we're just comparing and contrasting, right, to see where we want to go? What's the others?
I have a question, and I think Dave Thomas might be able to answer this. Instead of people worrying about the increase and how it would be paid, Dave, I'm sure at some point you've done this, do the members of council even make minimum wage during, when you just take the meetings into consideration? And my reason for asking that is, there are all kinds of jobs out there now. People won't apply for because they don't get paid enough. These people have a tremendous amount of responsibility, I know because my granddad was on city council in another town. And I would hate to think that they're getting paid, like, half of what the legal minimum wage is.
Well.
Put us in a ballpark.
Probably not. I have probably met during an annual, one year, about 80 different times, because I served on a number of boards. But I, I may not even run for the council again. I'm not worried about what I make, and I don't care.
But I'm asking the average council person, do they, is it ballpark minimum wage, or is, is it not even close to minimum?
I don't even, what is the minimum wage?
Eight.
Eight dollars.
Eight dollars? I thought it was up.
Eight dollars and 10 cents.
I say that we're probably, we're probably meeting 60 times a year, on average. So take that times 10 bucks.
Well, you can't consider 60 times a year, though, because you've also got to consider the fact of the reference that we do at home.
I'm going to, I was going to say that. You probably, we probably deal with two hours, half hour of every meeting. So I don't think we're getting underpaid as far as minimum wage.
Yeah.
But you want, you know, we're not, we all have wealth of experiences here, hopefully. That's why we were elected.
Well, and like I said, you've got a lot of responsibility, so I just kind of wonder if, like, the average person could be told, you know, we're looking at an increase, because if you think about it, and then say, with all the meetings and whatnot, it averages out to about?
I answer your question next council meeting.
Let him go and do the math.
Yeah, because, I mean, it may be ridiculously low.
It is ridiculously low. Yes.
I'd like to know what you all think.
Well, I have that. That's why I'm pointing around the room. Let's go with this side.
What went up on that one?
Bryson, what do you got, sir?
I, the idea that, that, you know, you, you all aren't voting for your own raises, I mean, that's appreciated, of course. But I don't want to make this a generational issue, but I want to point out that none of you at the table are at, you know, like, the child-raising years. And if you, and I am in that generational bracket right now, and I think that if you want quality people, you got to pay them. But more importantly, if you want to attract a younger professional to, to apply for the job, you got, I mean, time is a big issue to me, and it sure helps. And so I think, I think if you increase the numbers, that will maybe encourage some financial, you know, folks that aren't financially retired, or kind of, you know, set, you might say.
And I feel the question, why, so why do we need five council members? I mean, the county commission is sleeping.
Because you can't do it by yourself.
Yeah. No, but why do you need, why do you need five?
The founders of the city found it important to have five, and I, and that's because at the time, there were five wards. And you did each ward, and you had your own committee that you looked out over. Then they got rid of that, so now everyone's a general constituent.
But should that be changed?
Who was on this side after? Did you, Dr. Reed?
Thank you.
Just a couple of thoughts. One is, I don't think you can pay council what it's worth for their time. I think it's like many other things, it's a certain amount of it is their interest in what they're doing in the city, and the good of it. And I beg to differ, one comment about volunteers. A couple of years ago, I went around actively and tried to solicit, what are the numbers of volunteers in the county? And I identified very quickly, 3,000. And there's 430 people working with the youth sports program, and I know they spend a lot of hours. I think there are many people, you know, which I didn't even identify, that are doing volunteer work through the churches and other, other groups. And I think that's part of what makes our community go. And I don't, I'm not sure that we want people in the city council who are just there because of what they make.
Okay. That's a good point, excellent point. Ray, you had something back there?
Yeah.
Redmond Hall, Dave, I heard you say that you did deserve a raise, or needed a raise, but I've also heard you say that all these city ordinances, all the cats and dog ordinances, junk car ordinances, dilapidated house ordinances and everything, if you're not going, if you just go come up here and talk about it all the time, you're not going to do anything about it. I've also heard you say that if you're not going to stand up and do what you need to be doing, then, yeah, I say you need a raise, but you also got to take care of all these ordinances, instead of just letting them pile up and not do anything about it.
Thank you, Mr. Hall.
I agree with you.
CJ.
Well, some of the points I was going to make, but I don't know that the motivation of higher compensation is really what would drive the type of person you want to serve. It shouldn't be a vocation, but an advocacy. And that, you know, advocates for the community, you're the decision-makers, and that, you know, and I appreciate the process you entered into by having these meetings, and this wasn't the way it always was, when you asked the opinions of the community. So I'm kind of ambivalent about compensation, and, but I appreciate your efforts, and thank you.
Thank you. I don't think it's a matter, and really, I don't think it's a matter, to do what council members have to do. And not unlike what Dr. Reed is saying, as volunteers, you have a passion for it, you're seeing something that the community needs, and you feel that you could fill that role. That's what you feel. And you want to do it because you love your city, you love your citizens, you love your families being here. You do it because you want to see your friends, your family, and anyone else that you know be able to have expressions within the county, or within the government that you may be working on, even in an organization that you're working at. A lot of times, when we're talking about youth athletics, of course, that's because your kids are in there. You want to be with your kids as much as possible. But I've served on many boards, on many different areas, even including the art. Those people have the passion and the want in the field. But unfortunately, because of the fact that they may have another job, or they may have two jobs. At one point, I had two jobs and was doing all the volunteering work. That if you really want to get somebody that, at our age, is related to what Bryson was talking about, you would have to give them a little bit more of an incentive than not only being a mayor or a council member, but worthwhile when they're not with their families. For instance, each one of you that may not be here with your spouse right now, you could be at home watching, I know there's a good show I usually watch right about now, or with your kids. You know, I could be with my kids right now, but we're not, we're here. So maybe that compensation would make it easier for someone to say, I want to be in here, not only do I want to do something for this city, but I also want to know that my time is worth something more than what it is at this point. And that's, that's my thoughts on it, that's the way I'm seeing it. I'm, I'm on the fence right now as far as compensation. I did not run for the recorder for the pay, obviously, because it's one of the least of them all. I love taking notes, and I love being at meetings like this, and I love writing that stuff down, for future to understand where we're at. As the mayor, I love being able to, be able and find ways to try to facilitate the discussions that the community really needs to have. And I see a brain trust in this room. I know almost all of you, and I know each one of you are very much dedicated to what you do in this community, and it shows by being here tonight. What I want to see is it get bigger and bigger, and for this community to continue to grow. And as the mayor, I think I may be able to help you be able to do that. But I want the next person that comes along as well, the next person that wants to run for mayor, not to be one of those mayors that comes in and just works the 20 hours a week, or is only there Monday, Tuesday, or is only there maybe once a week. This town deserves more than that, and I think if you do that and add the compensation package for the mayor, you're going to get that kind of a candidate. That's the way I feel about it. Folks, I know it's late, it's 9:30, two and a half hours. Let me tell you this, I appreciate each and every one of your times for being here tonight. We learned a lot. I'm not going to, I, you know, we have council meeting next week as well, and we'll bring those up then. But, since you look so disappointed, Patrick and Jody, go ahead.
You know, we talked about, we talked about working with the landlord association.
Yes.
And, of course, you know that we work with the landlord association.
Yes.
And, you know, like, me and you do talk on a regular basis, so we can talk, but not all the council members normally hear. You know, where's the free market? It's constantly like, the city wants to get involved in some of this affordable housing, or help people get affordable housing, and I get that. But what you're doing is, when you put in affordable housing, like, you know, Valley Green, or the one that's going across from Kroger's, or the one that's going across from Country Club, what you're doing is you're taking away, you know, renters, you're taking away renters from, from people like us that are trying to make a profit. And the more that you take away, the more that you're putting in these, you know, it's a free market, you know, if somebody else can, can put in the houses and make a profit out of it, and go for it. It's not like it's a, you know, monopoly business. I don't, I don't feel like the city should be involved.
I'll just bring up a couple of those, those points. Free market, of course, is then by no means what the council wants to, a limit or eliminate. What we need to do is help figure out with the landlords, how the city can be a mover to help perhaps more development in that area. We don't know there is an answer, but that's the way we got to go, and I think it's through the landlord association that we would make that possible. Ms. Light.
And I'm going to, like, two minutes, a couple observations. First of all, when I'm hearing these $1,200 rents, we need to raise our rents. We have a lot of rental property, but we're not getting $1,200. I don't know who's getting $1,200 a month, unless they're very high-end. But the thing that concerns me is we say landlords this and that, and I don't think anybody in this room, whether it be men, women, or whatever, likes to be generalized. You know, we know, and I agree 100% with Lisa, I have gotten calls from people who've been referred to us by the city with horror stories, I mean, horror stories of landlords. We as individuals can't do anything, our landlord association can't. We know who some of them are, I mean, we do, but we can't control that. And I hope people understand that as an individual landlord, I can't tell another landlord that they, they're renting crap. You know, and ours isn't always perfect. But I can tell you, we have some good landlords, and we have some bad ones. And I thought it was interesting about the lease rules, we don't force anybody, we have a lease, it's been reviewed by attorneys, it's been to court, and it's prevailed. We don't force anybody to rent from us. We have some rules that some people don't like. They don't have to rent from us. But I can tell you that we have a lot of rentals now, I know a lot of other people have rentals now. To say there are none is not true. I'm not saying, you know, maybe there isn't a need, but I know that there probably were some landlords that, I mean, I suppose did double rents, we didn't, and most of the ones I know of didn't when the pipeliners came in, and they're leaving now, some of already left.[1789.41] left. One of the things when people say they can't find a rental, and I can tell you real quickly, not everybody in here, Lisa has them, I don't know how many people have rentals, but sometimes when they call you, we can't always meet what they want. Have you ever had dogs or cats in your apartment have allergies? Do you allow smokers? Can't do that, I have allergies. Do you, we want something without carpet? Do you have washer dryer? Do you have Wi-Fi? Do you have, and the list goes on and on. We can't always meet all that. That doesn't mean that there may be someone else out there that has it or there aren't available, but sometimes the demands, I mean, people go down a list, I mean, we're not, I mean, I've really, a couple of times had to say, "We're not a hotel, we don't do turn-down service."
It's a very complicated issue.
Well, it's, it's way more, and when you check backgrounds, when you check, you do background checks, and people come to us, and, you know, they will say, "Oh, you know, I need a place, Lisa's a terrible landlord, or Patrick's a terrible landlord, oh, they did this and they did that and they did..." When you call them, well, how were they? Well, they haven't paid rent for three months, that's why we... I mean, there's, there's really two sides.
I've heard a lot of those stories, Jody, you're absolutely right. I mean, they're not telling anything that probably nobody doesn't already know.
But there is a lot more to it than just saying there's no rentals, or they're being unfairly, you know, there's a lot more to it. So, just, I would open a dialogue and look for that, but there are rentals, and, you know, I'll give you my phone number, Patrick has rentals open, you know? It just depends on what they're looking for, too.
All right. Anyone else?
I have one final comment, I'll be quiet. How's that?
Okay.
Okay. How about, we have a housing enforcement officer now, and I've heard nobody speak at all about enforcing codes and everything in rental properties like they do in Morgantown and places like that.